All right, I'd like to call the New York City Public Commission Meeting to order. Uh, just go ahead and do the flag reading.
But in the instance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call please?
Commissioner and Chair Barisi is excused. Commissioner Carberry, I believe, is on Zoom.
Yes.
Commissioner Connell?
Here.
Commissioner Lyons?
Right.
Commissioner Landstrom?
Here.
Commissioner Layton?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Tenney?
Here.
I'd like to welcome our new members, David and Jamie to planning mission. Jamie, if you can please tell us a little bit about yourself.
Um, my name is Jamie Carberry. I am currently the principal at Sam Boardman Elementary. Um, I'm going on my third year as a residence of Boardman. Um, and I love Boardman so much. I've moved my daughter and her husband and my son to Boardman as well.
Thank you. David. Um, I'm David Landstrom and I moved to Boardman a year ago, just over a year ago, uh, to work as a paramedic. My wife and I moved here and also we took this position because it put us closer to our grandchild that lived in Great Falls without having to leave the state of Oregon. So kind of a win for us.
And thank you both for volunteering for this. We appreciate you being on planning condition. Uh, has everybody had a chance to review October's minutes?
Yeah.
We're on motion for approval.
Okay. I'm going to approve the minutes from the October 18th meeting, 2023.
Second. I have a motion in a second. I get a roll call vocals.
Sure, we can do that. Um. Commissioner Carberry. Yeah, we'll take that as yet. Commissioner Connell?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Landstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Layton?
Yeah.
Commissioner Tenney?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Lyons?
Yes.
And it's approved.
Okay, and then we're going to. We're going to open the public hearing on site design review, RVW 23 dash 000002. It's by the order. Unity Partners LLC, Bookport Investments LLC owners. The subject property is described as tax law 1600 of Cedars-Mattmore, Abydees, Euro 9 CC and its own tourist commercial sub-district. This request is to approve the hotel, restaurant, and short tourist rental sub-district. This request is.
You repeated online.
I did.
Yes.
Uh, to approve a hotel, restaurant, short stay recreational RV park. Uh, criteria found in the Boardman Development Code, Chapter 2.2, Chapter 4.2, Development Review and Site Design Review Section 4, X12, X1600. Approval criteria and provisions within Chapter 3 Design Standards is being processed as a Type 3 decision. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Stack report, self testimony, and following order. Applicant, any testimony in support of the application, any testimony opposing the application, any neutral testimony, and the applicant's rebuttal if there is any. When we close the public testimony, after the record is closed for testimony, sorry, then we will close the public testimony. After the record is closed for testimony, no other testimony will be heard from anyone who wants to find permission to have the specific question. The planning commission may ask questions of staff, after which the planning commission can discuss the matter and make a decision. The planning commission may make a final decision tonight, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If the matter is continued, this will be the only notice of that time and date you will receive. If you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form and submit it to the associate planner. I will recognize those people wishing to speak. Any questions should be addressed through me. Please state both their name and address for record when you come to the podium. As the hearing is being recorded, please keep testimony concise and to the point. Testimony should be on the action under consideration and address the substantive criteria. The criteria that apply to the decision are limited in the staff report. Testimony on other issues will be rejected and not considered by the planning commission. Failure to raise an issue in sufficient detail to allow the planning commission and parties the ability to respond to the issue prohibits an appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. Similarly, failure to raise constitutional or other issues regarding end conditions of approval in sufficient detail to allow the planning commission to respond to the issue prohibits a lawsuit and serve the court on that basis. Now I ask the members of the planning commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact bias or conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing.
So ex parte, okay, for the men, for the purpose of our new compliance commission members, let me just explain very briefly what ex parte conflict or bias might be. So ex parte contact is, well, I know the landowner, you don't have to disclose that, multiple is in here many. Um, but if you had a conversation with the landowner or the applicant about the action and it was an involved conversation, then you need to disclose that you had the conversation and the, um, the extent, the merits, the and if there was any outcome of that. You also need to then disclose that that conversation has affected your ability to make the impartial decision. Um, conflict is just that. Conflict is I own the property, um, if I'm inside a business on the property, um, I'm, you know, you, you have some conflict, uh, could be much conflict, but conflict nonetheless. And then bias is you come to the, the decision-making table, having already made your mind up for reasons that could be a myriad of reasons, but that, that it may be enough that you would need to excuse yourself in the decision-making process. So yeah, if you somebody knows someone, um, not an issue, but if we had a conversation, um, a big consequence that needs to be disclosed. Yeah.
Okay. Hearing none. Does anybody in the audience wish to challenge the finding measures impartiality? Hearing none, we'll move into the staff report.
Okay, so the applicant in front of you, again, as we've already discussed, is Unity Partners LLC. They are both the applicants and the owners. Uh, it is tax law 1600. I feel the wall wasn't there. It'd be like right there next to everywhere. Um, so South Interstate, Interstate 4 West of Main Street, it's along Southwest Front Avenue. It is owned for a commercial sub-district. Um, it's predominantly bare property. There is an older home in the northwest corner of the property and a proposed use and there is a state in the hotel or restaurant and a short state RV park. Um, so again, the property is predominantly bare. It has this older home on it. That's going to be removed. Um, the applicant, we've been talking to the applicant for a while on this. They submitted, um, an application. Uh, we did deem that application, uh, complete, uh, sufficiently complete to move forward with, um, the public hearings process. We did hold a site team meeting on December 7th. Um, and again, for the benefit of our new planning official meetings, the site team meeting is kind of an internal process we do working in by utility and other service providers to kind of sit around the table. We have a conversation about the proposed application. Um, talk about, you know, where's the water? Where's the wastewater? Is the fire department, can they respond? Um, we asked the various utilities to attend. So where's the fiber? Um, do they need fiber? Um, what are the different options? Do they want gas? Have they natural gas? So it's kind of a um, a lengthy list of probably 20, 25 people that we have by, we probably had 20 attend this site team meeting. It's always attended also by the applicant. Um, and so the applicant and their representatives were at that meeting. We kind of talked through the issues. Um, nothing significant came out of that, um, that was of concern or of, of problematic. Um, but, uh, uh, there was, um, you know, a conversation about how those utilities, um, could be identified. The fire marshal always attends those. Uh, so there's usually a conversation about access and ensuring that can all happen. So again, um, oh, I think one of, uh, one of the things I'll share with the background is, um, we did receive from the Oregon Department of Transportation, uh, the spreadsheet about anticipated average daily trips. Um, we did receive a trip generation letter from the applicant. Both of them indicate that we're going to need additional traffic information about the project and the actual impacts. Uh, the applicant is fully aware that the Main Street interchange area management plan is applicable to that. Um, we talked a lot about the need to develop uh, the balance of Front Street, um, as frontage to this property as well as the future Southwest First, which would be either split through the middle of this property or down along the west side and connect to Oregon Trail Boulevard. And you're going to go, whoa, what Oregon Trail Boulevard? Well, the future Oregon Trail Boulevard that will start at Main and go west, just like it currently starts at Main and goes east. So there's a lot of plan for where Oregon Trail Boulevard will, will develop and expand in the future. And so this development has, um, some real opportunity to help us complete the loop on the, in the southwest quadrant of the Main Street interchange to fully comply with the interchange area management plan. Um, again, it's being, uh, processed as a type three that those, um, under site design review that does require public hearing in front of the planning commission. So there's a lot in the, there's a lot in the staff report. I'm not going to go through all of it. I'm going to try to hit the high points. Um, I think the important thing to understand that hotels and restaurants are clearly a use allowed um, with this standards that they have to meet here, but they're clearly allowed uses within the church commercial zone. The, the odd man out, so to speak, in this request is the short stay RV park. Um, RV parks are delineated in the development code in a couple of locations in Boardman. This is not one of those locations. Um, the conversation that we had at the staff level was with the applicant is that a short stay RV would provide accommodations not unlike a hotel would. And they asked us to look at it through that lens. And so you probably noticed at the end of the staff report, there is a similar use determination, which in a lot of cases is done by the planning official. Um, but in this case, because the entire application is, is in front of you, um, I'm making a recommendation that you review it and so it is similar use, but at the end of the night, you, you, this body is the decision-making body. So how you, how do you choose to filter that? Um, based on what you see in front of you and the testimony will, will kind of guide your, um, decision-making process relative to that. Um, so we went through an awful lot of this. We looked at, um, Chapter 3 of the design standards. And so, um, on page two, we begin to move into that Chapter 3 analysis. And that's the bulk of the staff report is the Chapter 3 analysis. So we looked at access and circulation. Um, the site plan has at least three access points into the restaurant and hotel complex and one into the art, uh, short, short stay RV park. All of those would require an access permit that would have to be issued. They'd all have to meet the standard requirements for accesses. Um, and those would all be done prior, prior to development. Again, I've already mentioned the traffic study requirement. It has been determined that a full traffic impact study would be required. Um, there are some access options, uh, that they have for how access happens, but again, we've identified there are these four access points. Uh, we are requiring that they part, uh, we have a condition of approval, but they have to obtain those access permits. Um, minimum intersection sta- standards are, uh, 200 feet. Uh, no intersections are proposed. So if a corner, the corner from front on this, uh, under what would be Southwest First, but there are no new streets proposed within this development. Um, driveways are, are established at 50 feet apart. So there are some spacing patterns that we'll have to look at to make sure we can get to that with each of the access points that they're looking at. Um, shared driveways, uh, we don't, you know, again, we don't have a final site plan, exactly how much space the restaurant is going to take or exactly where the hotel is. We have some, we have an initial concept. Um, some of these driveways would be shared. Um, but that would only come into play if they divide the property so that there's a separate land ownership for the, say, the restaurant pad from the hotel and then again from the RV park as well. There is a portion of property at the southern portion of this that is open or ownership that they're going to do a future development on eventually, we will eventually see some kind of land petition with something on this property. And some of these things would be more applicable, like shared driveway would be more applicable if it was, if the pieces weren't separate ownerships. You know, so Sam owns Danny's and Joe owns the hotel and one of the driving needs is shared. Then there would need to be a shared, uh, shared driveway between the, uh, between the parties. Um, fire access and, and parking from area turnaround. Again, we did talk about, um, the, the fire access informational with fire marshal. So that will need to be, have a final approval prior to the developer review permit. Um, and then again, we don't, because we don't know who the final operators are going to be for the hotel, well, for any of the three actions. We don't have a, a clear indication of what the signs would be. We have a sense of where they might be located. Um, so they'll have to obtain sign permits, uh, prior to development. That's also listed as a condition of approval. Pedestrian access and circulation, there's some requirements for pathways uh, within the development code. They're going to have to meet those pathway requirements. Uh, there is a 10% landscaping requirement for, um, the industrial or the commercial zone. So at least 10% of the site and that's a whole site. And that doesn't mean they have to do all of landscaping in one place and avoid the landscaping for the other. They need to spread that landscaping around so that the restaurant meets it, so the hotel needs it, so the RV park needs it. Um, street trees is a requirement in the development code. We would encourage that there landscaping plan include trees along the perimeter, but also as appropriate within the parking just to provide that shade. We, we do live in a pretty semi-arid desert here and I like to park under trees. Um, sidewalks, um, you know, halfways or sidewalks are in the development. That can all come at the final development stage, but they are going to have to protect it for that period of insight. And obviously sidewalks will be required along the development frontage, um, where the street improvements will go along the front and along, um, the Southwest First. So that, that street improvement will require curb gutter and, and sidewalk as well. Um,
And that's, that's, excuse me, that's the sidewalk requirements and all of that are responsibility of?
The developer, the developer, yes. Well, I'm going to say the developer because, well, we have the applicant here. The final development might be done by the restaurant developer itself. But yes, the developer would be held all of these.
Okay.
Requirements, yes. Um, there is a narrative about fences, um, particularly as far as the RV park. Um, uh, we do require fence permits, so they would be subject to obtaining a fence permit at the time of the call. Uh, and there are some requirements in the development code about materials for fence. Um, again, barbed wire is not allowed in this district unless it's, um, approved in such a way that it can be. Uh, so again, conditions of approval. Um, we also have vehicle and parking standards. So, uh, the site plan indicates they can meet that standard, uh, but it doesn't really represent what a final parking plan would look like. So there again, we're looking for a final parking plan as part of any future of submittals. Um, there are some standards around, uh, how much they need for hotels and motels, restaurants and bars. Um, where that location is, it's again, it's shown around the restaurant. It's shown around the hotel. Uh, and then there's some parking, um, that's identified within the, uh, short stay RV park as well. Um, they can do shared parking, um. There are no off-street parking facilities in that area, so they really do have to meet the parking requirements within the development. Um, there are, there's all, we also have a standard for a maximum number of parking spaces. And then the development code is, uh, describes how parking stalls, um, their size and design shall be done. So, you know, it could be padded parking. It could be angle parking. Again, well, we will, at the time we see that final design of each of these components, we'll see what that parking looks like and they'll have to meet each of those requirements. So those are all listed as uh, conditions of approval. They also have to meet this maintenance team method with disabilities act. So they'll have to have, based on the number of parking spaces, then there will be an assigned number of ADA spaces that have to be installed or made available. Um, access from the parking area to the, to the respective buildings has to be a grade um, and they have to be signed. So all of those things are required as part of this. Um, so, uh, some of those spaces can be just car spaces, but at least it'll be a number that will be driven again by the total number of parking spaces will drive how many ADA and how many of those ADA have to be banned accessible spaces. So we, those will be required. For every 10 motor vehicle parking spaces, the development code actually requires a bicycle parking space. So we calculated that it appears based on what they've currently submitted, again, that could change based on the final number of parking spaces that they would need to have 10 bicycle parking spaces, um, with the hotel and five with the restaurant. And how they choose to spread those bicycle parking spaces around within the development is again, really kind of up to down, but we're looking for that minimum of five at the hotel. Again, if the total number of parking spaces changes based on the final design, those numbers may go up or down accordingly. Public facility standards, um, there is, uh, so this is where we look at water, wastewater, other public services, um, uh, traffic, uh, compliant with the tra- transportation system, plan those types of things. So water and wastewater connection, connections are available. Um, we have determined the exact location where they will connect. Uh, there's a couple of water lines in a lot of places out there made by historic installation, but there is the ability to connect to water, wastewater, uh, for fire protection and those types of things. Um, any installation, all installations shall comply with the Boardman Development Code and the public work standards. That would consider that a condition of approval. Um, there are some, uh, transportation theaters, uh, development standards, creature rights of way for streets, street location with and grade. Um, because Front Street is not dedicated, uh, at this point in front of the property, we would be looking for a dedication of Front Street. Uh, Front Street up to that point is an extremely wide right away. So we talked about narrowing that right away, uh, within that property. Uh, we also know we have current truck parking that happens along Front Street, um, in this quadrant like we do in some of the others. And so we have, we didn't have any final decisions at this point in time, but as we look at those road improvements that would be, um, the applicant's responsibility, the city, um, also understands that we may need to partner and make sure the Front Street to the development, um, also may need some improvement to allow and manage that truck parking in a more um, convenient and can be, can, convenient and feasible way. Uh, so we will be looking for dedication of both Front Street and Southwest First. Um, Southwest First to the end of their property and it's going to need to marry, um, the property that's south of this is the BKA property that's currently owned by Gary Ma and, uh, at all. And so, uh, they did a land partition here several months ago. We require some dedication for Oregon Trail and for the southern portion of what will be Southwest First Street. So we're going to marry the three front streets up. And of course, as you know, whenever you go under the VK easement with the road, you have to go where you don't encounter this way. So you have to kind of split where the, um, the towers are. So the, the location of Southwest First, the south of this property is probably a little too far east. So we're going to see a dog leg in there to kind of line up with where they're going to go along the western edge of their property. It'll work. We've done enough to know it'll work. So those requirements are all listed as, um, conditions of approval. Um, prior to their installation, we're going to need to see, of course, their design for their water and wastewater. That'll be reviewed and approved by the city engineer. Um, listed that as a condition of approval. Stormwater will, um, on the site, we need to be maintained on site in like form of Chapter 3.5. Um, and then we'll work with them on, on the stormwater for the street improvements. Uh, utilities shall be undergrounded. That's listed as inclusion of pool. And then any easements that would need be, would need to be, um, put in place for the utilities would need to be accomplished as well. Um, we do have some construction plan approval and assurances that have to happen as well as installation review and, um, install, uh, review prior to installation. Again, we've touched on stormwater management. Um, and then in the other standards chapter, the only item that would be applicable would be signs. And again, we don't have a final design for those signs, but that will be required and they'll have to obtain a sign permit for the signs that are on the building as well as any monument signs. Um, uh, also any directional signs within the, the complex. We would want to see those as well and review those as part of the sign permit. The final part of the staff report again is the code interpretation. And that's really focused on the short stay RV park, um, looking at it less as an RV park and value as a, um, short-term stay alternative. Uh, property owners were notified, joint property owners, notice was published, local happened on, uh, 2008. Um, a number of agencies were notified at the front, front end. And then again, we held a site team meeting. There were about 20 people in attendance. Uh, the meeting notes for that are on file. And then, uh, the planning official, uh, myself is recommending approval of this request and there are 19 conditions of approval. And again, some of those are more driven because we didn't have final design. And so we're inserting in this a requirement that they come back in and get development review permits. That is a staff decision with the final landscaping plan, the final site plan. All of those things would be submitted. We would review that before we move them to, um, the building asset or their building permits. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Jamie, that would include you as well. So happy to answer any questions you might have. Oh, it's a lot to get, right? So the applicant does have an additional handout for you tonight. One of them is in your packet. The other one is new. So I'll have, um, Nancy pass those out for you to see. I, as part of the staff report, I didn't get into the, um, the attachment, but we did provide a city map, um, provided their existing conditions now. We provided their, um, site plan and then we did provide a trip generation letter. We did not provide the attachments to the trip generation letter. Uh, just the, the, the letter itself. We do have the attachments on file. We then sent the narrative out after, um, after the fact, I actually talked with the applicant's representative and decided that there's some things in that narrative that would probably be helpful to you, particularly some of the concept plans. So one of the things I would like to ask you to do is, and so now that we have this additional item from the applicant, to, um, add to the, take, uh, make a motion and add to the list of attachments, both the narrative and the handout that we received tonight to happen. You can do that now or you can do that later.
I think a vote, you know, we moved the, uh, handout and the, um, narrative into the, uh, packet for the, uh, patent. Thank you. That's a motion to accept and record the project narrative and the handout this evening and to tonight's record. All in favor?
Yeah, sure.
Or I'm sorry.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, of a discussion. Okay, of a discussion. Okay, well, welcome.
Mr. Carberry?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Lason?
Yes.
Mr. Laden? Mr. Kinnon?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Sam Irony?
Yep.
Thank you so much.
We've got this additional information available for those that really audience that might be opposing this.
Um, we can make that available, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Is there any one copy of any of those items?
I'd like a copy.
Sure. Okay.
Maybe I just need to come back to you because I I'm an adjoining property owner with a, with a shared driveway and would like to see, I guess, a more information on, on the project is I, I don't really know other than the narrative is a, you know, short-term.
Find out post commissioner.
Right.
Public hearing procedures.
Right.
We'll get your question when we get to either support, opposition, or neutral. But I'm happy to answer your questions.
Right now, I'm just, I'm so.
We will do our best to inform you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I keep kicking that metal thing there in front of me. My apologies.
There any further to respond to this?
No, that would be, that would include the correspondent, yeah.
At this time, we've been to public testimony. That may not present any, nothing that may have. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application?
I'm Darren Hoff, I'm a base state engineering and I'm here representing applicant on this project. So we have read the conditions of approval and have no no questions on them. We understand and agree with them, so I just wanted to turn it there. And then secondly, I'm just going to do a quick overview of what we have in front of you. Um, starting with the hotel. So we're, and just anticipating, we're waiting for the franchise to, to lock in, but they have to have this approval before we get the franchise to commit. So we are anticipating roughly an eighty-five room hotel. And with that, uh, what we've shown basically is a rectangle building. We know it will be different, but we don't know exact shape. So we did this just to illustrate that we do have the room and the ability to get the proper number of parking. Because that always seems to be a thing of the kind, okay, we're, didn't give us enough information. So we showed that we have plenty of room for the required parking stalls. We kind of did the exact same thing with the restaurant. We have a rough idea of the square footage that's going to come in, which required fifty parking stalls. So we made sure we had enough area to accommodate that so that we don't get in trouble later by not having enough room. So that's why we have it shown the way it is. Not much information, but that's really information we had to go from at this point. Um, the RV park, it is a very short-term stay. I picture that like a Walmart parking lot. This would be the alternative. I don't know if you've ever traveled with an RV, but you see lots of them going to Walmart parking lots because it's an easy place to stay, it's a place to stay a night. Off they go. Or we're giving them a better facility and we'll be tied at the hotel. So we're trying to get that, that traffic to a known facility with the right amenities for them. And it will be ran by the hotel and hopefully they'll be, they'll patronize the restaurant and other amenities in town. So that's really why it's there. It's in conjunction with the hotel to accommodate those people that are going to find a parking lot nearby. So we might as well give them a proper facility to stay. So that's why it's connected here. Um, as far as um, the road connection, my car just touched on it, uh, First Street will end up with some movement to, to connect to the new road that's going to come through, through power lines. Um, that's just a matter of schematics. Once we finally get to that point, we can make that happen. As far as utilities, all the public utilities are there for us to connect to. Um, so there are no issues there and we will be improving uh, Front Street and First Street. So we're bringing in new roads for the facility. Um, the RV park will have a paved road. It says gravel on here, but we found out during our meeting on the seventh has to be paved. So that will be a paved road through the RV park. So there won't be gravel roads there also. And then there will be facilities for laundry and uh restaurants that are required with RV park. They're not required with the parking lot. So we're trying to keep it uh, clean and other than that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
On your, uh, more, where you're really emphasizing in all the materials, uh, that it's a very short stay.
Yes.
How, how, how does that occur?
We don't allow them to stay by the week or by the month. There's other RV parks in town that are set up to accommodate that or not. This is an alternative to parking lot basically. And so we're trying to make it more feasible, more accommodating and better for everybody. And also it goes in conjunction with the hotel. So they kind of come hand in hand. And, but we will have rules in place. The city has a requirement that says we can't have them uh, long-term, so we want to be short-term. And so that's how we'll do it. We'll live it by the ninth. And uh that pretty much guarantees that if somebody's coming in for extended periods of time, they're going to want a better deal than an overnight rate. And there's other RV parks in town that would handle that easily.
You can have a waste disposal for them?
Yeah, there'll be a dumpster.
You bet.
More sewer, so. Oh, yeah, they'll connect the public sewer. Yeah, absolutely. So there'll be a, a main line that goes throughout the uh, RV park and they'll have a connection. There'll be a water, there'll be sewer that we power for them. Um, and they'll pay for that service. But yeah, everybody will have to do that.
But not necessarily, um, I don't know if this is what you meant, but not necessarily every space, but uh, that you just addressed that, but an RV dump. Like where they pull up to dump their gray tank, black tank, sort of thing. Because if they don't, and they, they're looking for one, they'll end up going down to uh, the um RV park down, down by the river.
If we have one, it will be internal. We won't want one out by the road because we don't want.
Yeah, they usually, yeah, they're general.
Right, right. So it, it would be at a stall or by the main road. Yeah. But don't anticipate one right now because every stall is going to have one. If every, every say we have some dry camps, dry spots, uh, then we would have them. Uh, so right now that is not planned. Every place is planned to have their own utility.
Anything for the questions for the commission? Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Jackie, anticipation of potential other comment, would you pull up the staff report related to this and scroll down to the vicinity map? It's the map that's in color. And share it. I think it might help you answer the questions that, um, Mr. Yes, I'm trying. I know, I know. Keep, keep going, um, Vice Chair Irons and Will.
Or does anybody wish to speak in favor of the application?
I'm, uh, Angie Sullivan. I am the current specialist on the team and I'm available for any questions regarding the narrative or the project itself.
Thank you. Anybody wish to speak against the application?
Um, during the annual report report for the victory. You've got today's. There's been a fight about this. Application, uh, I talked to numerous people about this, um. I'm struggling with the location of having, um an RV site right at the entrance of town. Um I've been looking at uh, different schematics and different things and I'm just going the firstly, I don't want, I don't want an RV camp being first things up your seat. Uh, especially the way this is designed, um, as a just a short-term parking lot. Now I'm having a hard time with that. I, I think our town's growing to the point where we're looking at, uh providing a better quality, um, front for our community. Um. I want to make sure that, um, as for the hotel, I, I want to make sure we're we're doing a quality job of our, of our services, of everything we provide. Since when we hear about eleven years ago, twelve years ago. But it's thirteen, yeah, thirteen years, uh. I've seen where we thought so small on things. Uh, we haven't thought that, you know. Uh, to me, I'm in favor of the hotel. I'm not against that. But I want to see is if we're going to put a hotel, put a nice hotel in. Okay, well, it's bringing a good branding. Um, or we start getting some good clientele coming in into Boardman. And I'm just thinking small. I, uh, I don't know if this is going to impact the RV park that we have down at the river. One thing that does concern me is I want people to know about our park down there. That RV park is one beautiful thing along the Columbia River. Uh, we take in the short-term stays uh, throughout the summer. We take them through winter too. Uh, we're looking at expanding. I, I'd rather see the support going toward that than providing a as quoted, a Walmart parking lot. We're sure it's a short-term stay alternative. Uh. Well. You guys have all gone down to the park, know what it's like. Know it's the the one best in the whole state along the Columbia River. Uh, and that's what I think we need to promote more than just a parking lot that's paid for someone to stay overnight. Okay, um. Well, those three points, I really think you guys, I, I think we can do better than what's being presented to you. I think the, when I looked at the plans for the RV's campground, um there is no beautification there. It's just paved slots all the way through. And that's, to me, that's not working. That's not what I want to see us go to. So that's my opposition.
Mr. China?
Yeah.
Just for a clarification, since you are running the RV park down the Marina, what are, are we ever exceeding capacity? Are we able to meet the demand?
Um, well, like I said, we're, we're looking to expand it to, we're, there're holiday weekends. When we opened up on December first for this next year's reservations, uh, we're already booked on three holidays. So we're looking at expanding and putting in a, uh, another overflow in uh, with ten to twelve sites or seven. Um, but we have the, the the big expansion plans in the future, uh, will include another, will have over a hundred sites. Uh, beyond the sixty-three that we have right now. But that's not, that's down the road. How will we get the approval from the core engineers to be able to do that?
If I, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any mutual testimony?
Yeah.
So my name is Don Russell and I'm an adjoining property owner on Main Street to the north of the property. We'll have a shared driveway apparently. Um. And, you know, I don't know a lot about the project. I got the notice that there was a hearing tonight and that's the only thing that I've received. So I haven't seen anything. I find out tonight it's a, a short-term or short-stay RV park is your life. Um you know, as, and I'm RV'er, I've stayed in short-term RV parks. Some are done really, really well and others not so well. So it just depends on how well they do the project. Um, but I'm, I'm, you know, again, I don't know a lot about it, so I, I don't know the impact to you positively or negatively, or it doesn't impact at all. That's what I'm prepared to find out. I'll, I'll get with Carl and staff and and look at what the site plan was like.
So just to try to maybe provide some clarification for you and, and for others, um. So if you go back to the, the color map, um yeah, so on this one here, so whoops, it's upside down. That's okay. Um, maybe. There we go. So Commissioner Russell, yours to the property with the, um.
Yeah, we have the existing car wash.
Existing car wash and laundry. And the property owner to the north of you is Devon. And then there's the, the existing hotel. And then the property to the south of you is owned by Rayan Pacheco. So, um, this property is bounded by the little line in that picture. They are working, um, with Mr. Mon, um, to acquire the property to the south of them, which would, which would create a connection to Main Street and would also, um allow them. So if you look at this map, the kind of, it's kind of L-shaped, you know, a funky L-shaped piece of property. And the southernmost portion of this property is actually, um, not part of this development and they're reserving that for future development. So again, if you look at the at the colored kind of map that you buy apart from the, from the applicant, you'll notice that that bottom part is for future development. So the property they're looking to acquire from the southern property owner would require, um, in the, in the Main Street interchange area management plan, there's also a future connection, um, kind of, um in that vicinity. So probably between the property owned by Rayan Pacheco and the property they're looking to acquire from Gary Mon may have another road connection like Front Street. It would be a ride-in, ride-out. When Front Street, um, has the, will complete all the loops necessary to meet her farms, the IMP. Front Street becomes a ride-in, ride-out. And then any future interim street would also become a ride-in, ride-out. And then of course, if I was sharing, they're going to try to connect down Oregon Trail. Oregon Trail would eventually continue where you can see it there going to the east. It will go to the west as well, just on the south side of the BPA easement. Um, so while they connect to your property.
There may be no common ground, but I was thinking that they were they were at possession of the property immediately because that's how.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. And that, that, that's owned by, um, last time I looked at the map, that was owned by Rayan Pacheco.
Uh, that's my understanding, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That little lot just to the south of yours?
Yeah. It's not, it's the same size as mine.
Well. It's in the map, in the, in our sequence of the map, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Does, does that help answer some of your questions?
So this is the property that had the big garbage dump on it, well, a couple of months ago.
And we've been wanting to get that brought up.
Yeah, I thought somebody had, uh, put in a another panel. Okay, thanks. I, that helps out a lot. So I don't have very many questions if I did.
Great, thank you. Glad to answer those for you.
Thank you.
I'm Scotty Pauling. Uh, I, I just have some questions. I, I'd like to see more developed plans of that. Um I know like, for example, the, the property that's up by me, Fletcher Hobbs had to build, uh, the loop road before it got done. I'd like to see the plans of how the loop road on this one and I am, it does, how wide are the roads going to be? If you have an RV park there, um, it, taking a left out of there is going to be really difficult to, to take out, especially when Boardman gets busy during that time. That's something to think about. Now, if we had a loop road, then of course it is there. I know Fletcher, he had to sign an agreement saying that he would help build the loop road before he got that property building in. I'm just saying, he had to do it. Let's, if we're going to set the precedent there, why aren't we setting a precedent here now? I love this building. I love developing Boardman, but at the same time, there are some things that you really have to look at. And that, um, that, you know, with, uh, the right ways, the, the roads, the new arterial roads. How wide do the roads have to be? All those things are going to have to be mapped out. Especially if it's an RV park, turning the left, turn right there because they're going to be coming out, uh, taking a left. Unless they're going to go back to Boardman, I don't.
You're talking about the left on Main?
Yeah, that on me. Yes, sir. Yes. So, uh, but otherwise I want, I want development of Boardman. I really do. But these are questions that we have to ask ourselves. Thank you.
I have a question. Sort of a question, Carol Pauling, um how big is a motel and is a restaurant attached to it? I mean, is it gonna have any rooms of this uh hotel that has a motel?
So.
Eighty-five is what they're anticipating.
That question, there's a planning mission, please, thank you.
So as stated earlier, it's going to be up to eighty-five rooms.
Okay.
The restaurant is going to be separate from the hotel.
Okay.
And three stories. No, the hotel.
Does the app get wishes to provide any of the bottle?
Yeah. Um as far as Mister Chimer's comments, uh if I was running an RV parking town, I wouldn't want another one either, obviously um. But he did make a statement that they're already booked for some major events already for twenty-four is what it sounded like. That shows a need right in there. And the comments of Walmart parking lot, taking a little bit of context, this is not a lot. That's why we're building this, so they don't try to park in a random parking lot, and in the narrative, we also showed. Photos of what we anticipate to bring in, we've listed exactly what we're gonna bring in, we're bringing in playgrounds. Every stall gets uh grass, a calmer tree, there's longer masters, playgrounds. There's shower facilities, there's additional parking, if there's two cars traveling together. So we're covering this, it is not a parking lot, we are paving the road because we're required to pave the road. The non-parking areas are not paved, so it's not just a big parking lot, this is there so that. They're not parking in parking lots around there, obviously, if needful, the other guys probably will. There are gonna be people that travel through for the night, that's exactly what this is for, it's to pick up that customer. And to give them a place to park that is properly, that has the right amenities, has the water, the sewer, the electric, both of those. Has the landscaping, has stuff for children, has everything for, so this is truly an RV park, it's just a short term on. But has every amenity that all the nice RV parks have. So we wanna be clear on that, that we're not just paving a big two acre site and calling it here. This is why we're bringing this into Portland. As far as roads, um we're obviously doing a larger amount of road infrastructure than it is, we'll be finishing on front. And also the first group, so there's a lot of roads that we're building to improve so that we can get access into the site. Yes, there's stuff offsite that in the future will be addressed, Oregon's gonna come down. Uh First Street will hook into Oregon, so there's all kinds of roads being planned that will just make the traffic much better out here. Um but it takes development, and this is the start of it. Um so hopefully that addresses access issues, because we are putting, building a lot of road, the roads are the city's plan that it's a bit with. That will be set by the city, um so they're a public road.
So Mister Hop, you put in 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 the packet we were provided was an analysis of the traffic. And and in that analysis, um it doesn't anywhere address. Um egress off of front, um back onto an already congested lane right by a freeway. Uh interchange, and with the IMP, uh was there any consideration by your group to look at what that would be to impact? Because pulling a trailer out of that area, we see what happens with the semi trucks, um and now you have a trailer pull. I'm just curious, because nothing was included in this about that with the uh other than just volume.
I think that's a first requirement of the conditions of approval, that we have to go through that traffic analysis and impact. And so that is one of the things we have to do at this point, has not been done. Is it is a preliminary process, so we have to move forward from here once we get our approvals.
Jose, I can add a little bit to your question as well, Commissioner Armstrong, um we are required, they do a full traffic impact study. Uh we'll include that analysis, um the IMP does require that um front eventually become a ride in, ride out. It's hard to do that if you don't have the ability for people to travel in different directions. So that's where the Loop Road component comes into play, so. Um the city has always had a commitment um to building Oregon Trail Boulevard. And so Oregon Trail and the portion of Southwest First that would go under the BPA would be a city participation with this project. Um but from the city's perspective, it's the project that's really driving the timing of this. This improvement, not the fact that it would happen, but the timing of it, so the city's always been committed to Oregon Trail and to doing the Loop Roads. Um anytime you have development, you look to developers to participate for their component. So we'll be looking to this developer and their developments, not only this portion of the property, but the port property that's south of this that is yet un- undetermined. Um to help facilitate the development of Front Street and Southwest First, so um. When, when they initially open, depending on their timeline for opening and our timeline for getting a complete Loop Road system done. There may be a period of time where they're dealing with front as a full intersection with right and left turns. But that will change fairly quickly in the process, because main and front and the interchange can't handle the additional load. And we know we're gonna see that as an outcome of the traffic impact study, so um we fully, I I'm fairly confident what is part of the traffic impact study. It's gonna tell us, and it's gonna, it's just gonna encourage us to implement the requirements, the IMP as soon as possible, so. Um what's kind of uh what makes my job fun is working with development, whether it be this developer or someone else. And having that conversation about how do we not only achieve, you know, what you wanna do, but see how we can, how we can add to that. Um the other projects that the city may want to accomplish and how they can, um you know, it's not a a true public partner, part, public private partnership. I mean, we're not partnering together so much and doing a project, but two projects need to come together, the bridge needs to meet in the middle, so it's good. I hope that helps you understand how we think about these things a little bit.
What, and then the rest of what you say?
Right, right, well, and and you know, the reality is, is. We could ask them to do that trip, that traffic study now, but if they came in with a hotel that was somehow wholly different than this and created a different traffic. Uh trip generation, then they have to go back and do that again, so we're trying to stage the requirements, trying to meet what they are in the design process.
I just didn't, they did a site, then if their EBS came out and actually looked at that. That was generally what.
But in terms of original matter, they probably didn't, for traffic impact study, they have to.
And that was my, that was what my question was directed to, because they're just going off of statistical data from their information. I didn't know, they actually came out and looked at site for their their rebuttal in their letter that they provided. But from my understanding, it was exactly what Carla, yeah.
I have another question, um so have, uh I may have missed in the packet, and if I did, I apologize. Um what are your, the uh people who went to stay in the RV that's all registered through the um hotel?
Yep, that's what.
And that would be like a limit of four nights or something?
We've always had less than seven, but three to four is what we anticipate, we anticipate far more single night stays.
Okay, yeah, I saw.
Yeah.
That it was kind of three to four, and then I was wondering what the outside limit was around this seven?
Yeah.
Okay. Um also, um somebody hitting at, somebody like if you're pulling a trailer versus um. I don't know why I have my head like small RVs or something, um so you they they could camp there as well with tent or whatever they.
No, but we don't have any tent sites set up on the site, although there's a grass area. Or the playground and the. Everybody would rent a RV stall.
Uh huh.
And there'll be criteria on what the RV has to look like.
Okay.
So typically, it's ten years old or newer is allowed, if it's older than that, you still might let some in, but it has to be a visual inspection. Uh so they, you know, nice little airstream.
Sure, are you going to be taking like a a five week, year out reservation? For those?
No, it's not anticipated to be done at all.
Okay.
So we we anticipate it come off off the highway as they're traveling down, but there, with that being said. I should say, we anticipate most of it to be average, because you know, it's just a hotel, somebody can get online when they're traveling through and make their reservation.
Right, but somebody could call in and, you know, a couple weeks in advance and say, yeah.
Mostly online these days, yeah.
Right, yeah, I'm old, so I think everybody picks up a landline phone and calls it, so uh. I think that's kind of all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Here, Irons, we do have a question in chat.
Okay.
Can I read it?
Yes, please.
Uh Jose Fernandez wants to know, do you anticipate having, do you anticipate having thirty-eight customers at one time? Or why are there so many RV stalls if it's only a short stay, one or two days as stated?
Uh right now, there really isn't a magic number, that's how many fit in that area, and they anticipated to not need more than that. So that's why we we set it that way, plus we set them up at twenty-five feet in width, so that even everybody has adequate space. But we'd love to have thirty-eight at a time, do we expect that all the time? No, we do not. Uh we would expect it to have a similar occupancy like the hotel, uh around sixty during the busy season and an off season, uh not very many. So.
Yeah, it says in here fifty. Is there any more questions online?
More questions online.
Recognizing that uh not everybody has the information in the packet, the uh developer is working with higher end. Um franchises similar to Hilton, Marriott, that type of, that's their uh goal on the franchise. But we just don't know where it is and how we can do that negotiation. So there's any other questions on the hotel?
What?
And and then the rest, and the restaurant would kind of be like a a Denny's or a Sherry's level.
As far as the hotel goes and and the 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 companies they work with, they own other hotels, obviously, and they are.
Uh all of them, actually, I was I was quite surprised, but he was, he was really hammering on the, you know, he's feeling really good about the Marriott and the the Hilton. And um. And how they annexed. But that hasn't been finalized at all.
Right. Thank you. The public testimony portion of the hearing has got closed. Does Stephanie respond to your question, or is it great?
So um. I think though, I think the one thing um that is always really hard um in your role as a decision maker is that. Um anytime you're looking at a land use decision, it is a substantive criteria that you're looking at. Um as as much as we'd like to uh dabble in the market, uh that's not our role. That's the role of the market, um that's the game the developer plays um in the market, so I just. I I can appreciate the concern about how the uh what we're presenting to the public, you know, what it looks likely to come into Portland. I think it's really important that we put our best face forward, um but some of those issues are uh. Um can be market driven, and that's, that's not a role we have as a planning commission or as a finding department, so. Um I'm happy to answer any of the questions my have, but I just wanna kind of make, that would be my only other thing I would add, I think. Um I'm just glad to talk through the conditions, as you, as you move into deliberation and think about the decision. Um couple of options ahead of you, approve it as presented, you can approve it with modifications. And you can certainly choose to deny, um but if you choose that, if you go down that road, you're gonna wanna make sure you have real good findings about why you would make that decision to deny, so. Um yeah. Answer any further questions or encourage your li- liberation?
Anybody have a ready commission, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a question or a statement or whatever, but um it seems to me that that we had, we just had forty-five minutes of discussion. In regards to the RV park, part of this thing, and it seems like there's too many, still too many. Um we anticipate, or there might be, or this is what we expect, or or this is what we um are. Or seeing, or it just doesn't seem like there's enough. Um. Clarity on on how that part of it's gonna work, and then there seems, that seems to be the biggest concern so far of this whole deal. The hotel and the restaurant, obviously, everybody wants that, we need it, we need it like bad, um the RV part, part of it. Um well, if if, you know, if you could, if you're gonna say that there's a seven day. Uh limit, if that's, if that's their, you gotta go, to me, that's more of a, it's not short term necessarily. I mean, if you give them the opportunity to stay that long, I would, I would, I'm I'm concerned about. Uh. What we already have not being utilized as well as it should be, and I I don't, I don't, I don't feel like I I know enough about the that part of it. In in. Like real data or real, this is what we're going to do, not anticipate, you know. I mean, I I wanna approve the hotel and the, and I, the whole thing, the only thing that bothers me is all the concern about the the RV park. And whether it's worthy of more discussion, I don't know, maybe I'm the only one that feels that way, I don't know.
We heard denied an application for an RV park on that site at one time, I'm learning. So I I really reached out in her, basically, regarding the RV park, all four of the hotels and the restaurant, that that doesn't bother me because they already parked us.
So just a point of clarification, because I wasn't here at that time, was it an RV park or a manufactured home park?
It was an RV park.
See, that's what, I can't remember exactly what it was either, because there was also discussion about it could egress out the back of it, remember? You know, we have to have that other road, and we haven't just had any of that discussion, so yeah, I don't remember exactly. I can't remember when it was, to go back and look at the minutes.
Right at the beginning, when we first came on, and we had denied it based on the fact that it wasn't, it didn't fit the criteria.
Right, and RV park was not a um, help me with the language.
The proper use of.
Yes, it was not a commercial.
Standalone, right? There was a standalone.
And it, it didn't meet commercial, I think is what it was.
Again, I wasn't here at the time.
Yeah, I know, I know.
My recollection and the commentary I heard was it was a manufactured home park, but again, uh it wasn't for my time, so. Um I know it was denied, um a manufactured home park would not, would, you know, again. We're doing, what you see in the FAP report, and similar use determination related to uh a short term accommodation. So that that was the rationale for moving forward with the RV park to this point. Um but my recollection, that was a a manufactured manufactured home park.
Well, and I do think that due to the fact that this is combined with a hotel. Makes it different, even if that was an RV park that we were addressing at that point, which I don't remember exactly. Um but that this, because it is with the hotel, makes it a little bit different, because it is a short term and somebody's overseeing it. Um basically on a daily basis, uh but yeah, so.
So as as we're looking at this, we're looking for an interpretation variance where we're adding. RV sites now into the same classification as hotel short scan, because.
No, not generally, not, this is not amending the code, this is, this is specific to this site.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, so so that's where the similar use determination comes in, for this site, you're making this determination that. The operation of the RV park is similar enough to the operation of the hotel, that you're you're kind of connecting them. You're making this assumption that the operation of hotel is. That you're you're kind of connecting them. You're making this assumption that the operation of hotel is a similar use to the operation of how the RV park would be operated, yes.
Okay, and and we're hearing now that the RV park. And the hotel are now merged, um but in a number of the statements were that. The restaurant, the hotel, and the RV park are three separate entities that could be managed under. Different. Um individuals, which then separates it from the original, which uh Marriott won't, or I'm choosing Marriott as a as a term. Um the convoy is now going to have an RV park. And and so. I guess, I guess for me is um we've kind of got kind of a conflicting thing that one is the hotel, one is this, and we're trying to say similar use when it could be separated.
So, and and uh. I guess in my mind, I I I looked at them as kind of, I'm I'm analyzing A, B, and C. They're telling you that. A is the restaurant, they're telling you that B and C will be operated collaboratively. I evaluated them as three separate activities. Because in my mind, I'm I'm looking at a hotel, hotel clearly needs a standard, the RV park doesn't. So I've looked at that from the perspective of. From from that similar use perspective.
Right.
I think what you're hearing from the applicant is A may be very separate, A may not be, you know, A may be a Denny's operated by Denny's and not by whoever the hotel operator is. What I'm hearing from them tonight very clearly is that the hotel and the RV park would be operated collaboratively.
But how can you say that when you don't know who the hotel operator is gonna be yet? You haven't gotten a okay, just don't normally run these short term RV parks elsewhere? I mean, how can you say that they they're gonna be combined? To 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 fit this criteria, when we don't know who it is?
So. So. You're right, I don't know who their, who their franchisee is. What we are moving towards is an approval of a whole of of these three things that are gonna happen on its property in some way, shape, or form. And what they have to do before they can get to their building permit. Is they have to come back to the planning department. And say, here's our final site plan for our restaurant, here's our final site plan for our hotel, here's our final site plan for our RV park. And we're gonna look at all of that, and we're gonna also look at the final traffic impact study, and we're gonna look at what the road dedication is gonna be, and what the improvement of infrastructure is. And we're gonna review that before they move it out of the planning process and go to the next step after that, which would be a utility review and then a building review. So.
So this is the last time we see it.
It's the, it's the last time you'll see it, it's not the last time planning will see it. Now, if you wanna ask for a part to come back to you, you can certainly ask for that, it wouldn't be out of the sequence. Um but you could ask for that.
So they, the franchisee. Could come back and, you know, um the hotel, they go, hey, the hotel's gonna be run by A. Restaurants by B and C over here is gonna run the. Um RV park.
You know, and and I guess what I would say is, as long as your decision is really clear. That this is a short term RV park, I guess I would, I would ask the question, does that matter who operates it?
No, but are we, are we, is it short term? I don't consider that short term. I consider that a vacation if it's my family. I mean, short term to me is one or two nights, like a hotel is. You know, I mean, here we have a kind of a weird thing where we have people staying in hotels for weeks and weeks and weeks because of construction. Amazon, everybody else, the State Center, I work though, our hotels are packed full all the time. This one probably will be also. There's also gonna be a a push to let those people stay. And if if they could put a a a. A week to me is not short term, it's just not. Uh I don't, I don't see that as short term. And I see him, I don't see him necessarily being, I think they're gonna, they'll fill up with contractors just like that. Like everywhere else does. And and they'll stay for a week and they'll move out and come back. Uh I mean, it's it's how they how they do, how those guys do their business. And I'm just concerned about it because it's it's the thing that the most. Of uh or the most conversation we've had is over that deal. And I I just hate to see it turn into something that that we all believed was gonna be one thing and. Because there's not enough solid information on it. We're, we're um. I don't wanna let it, I don't wanna go without knowing. Where where we're gonna be. Is it possible to separate the RV park from this? And discuss it separately?
Um, I think. I think we could figure that out, I mean, right off the top of my head, I don't know. But yeah, I think we could figure that out. I mean, I think you could move towards. The staff report is written in as a whole, and so, um. Wh- what you could do is. So, okay, uh please understand this is off the top of my head, okay? So just. Let me.
Sure.
Let me Virginia Woolf for a minute, okay? So, um. You could ask us to pull the RV park analysis out of the staff report. And put it separate. Okay, and ju- basically split this decision and put the RV park into a separate staff report. You could uh approve the hotel and the. To restaurant. And and you could, you could make that approval tonight. And then I would suggest that um. You continue your deliberation on the RV park. Um be clear about what additional information you want from staff and or the applicant. Continue that hearing to a date, time specific. I think you should take the opportunity um to ask the applicant what a reasonable timeline is for that. Based on what you ask for, or whether we would continue that to January or February. Um. Again, I'm I'm just kind of off the cuff here, so is that something, I I guess I would also ask you to do a throttle or do something to determine. If if that's, if that's the commissioner Honle position, or if there's more of you that share that. Um. So, yeah, that's why I'm off the cuff.
Go ahead. Are you done?
Yeah, I think so.
Then keep thinking. I I am, I'm sitting here trying to think of, okay, if. If I in a throttle would say, yes, pull it out of there, what? How does that discussion look, how does our discussion look different? In thirty days than it does today, if they, if. The developer franchise. If they go out to try and find a franchisee and all. But then there's this piece hanging around out there. That may make it more difficult for them to move forward. And does our discussion or the information we need? Is it information we can have in thirty days? Those are all really valid questions. Before I would, you know, I'm processing that real quickly myself to go, if I vote for more and from to hold it. For thirty days. What will I have different? Right. Does that make sense?
And and.
Make sense to Carla, good.
I I, yeah, no, I I, I think we're tracking a similar path. Um my other, my other comment would be if. Again, I think, you know, have this conversation amongst yourselves, but if you feel strongly that seven days is too much, then. Pick what you think is right. If five days is appropriate, then add a condition that says short term stays will be limited in five days. Um, you know, the president pulls in and stays for five days and pulls out and comes back two days later and stays for another five days, we're never gonna stop that.
No.
But if you feel strongly that seven, seven days is too long and you think five days is more appropriate, then. Contemplate that as a condition.
I I think where my concern is coming up is. Everywhere else RV parking is associated with camping and recreational. Um and so what we're doing is we're now combining mixed use in that. And um I I I think that. I'm not looking at the visual acuity of, what I'm looking at is uh we have codes in place, we're building uh regulations in place. Uh to move that type of activity into a different zone. And I think that's where uh my concern comes in. As to how we could, i- if it's possible to move this forward. Um but to me, uh where we're just trying to say, well, it's associated with this, therefore it doesn't look the same as something else. Um but, you know, again, I got this packet, you know, like everybody else. And so having to do some deep dive, it was like. RV is associated with camping both throughout the state of Oregon as well as nationally, when it looks at different types of codes. And I think. If we look at it from that perspective, I think that brings up. The RV camping aspect of it as different than hotel management. So I think that for me is where I I would need to um. Look at how we would separate that out because we're not, we're they're, while they're looking for a combined usage. Granted, we we we're now looking to say, except in this isolated case, but not every case. And that that to me uh is just concerning that we're, we're trying to redefine what that camping and RV looks like in our community.
Right, right. I guess what a similar use determination really allows is for you to have that conversation about something, yeah, that would be. The exception to the rule, maybe.
Right.
It's a way to think about that, yeah.
And I think I could come, I could get on board with the similar use thing if. If one we knew uh more definitive what short term is. What it means to the applicant or the, you know. And whether or not the hotel. Friend, whoever that's gonna be, is on board with being a part of it. If if they're not, which is fine, but if they're not, is the applicant. Do they have the uh ability or the the plan B to provide the necessary. Structure to run it. Without the hotel. You know what I mean? Because if if you take away the hotel, that that kind of takes away the similar use, or is it because it's all in the same property?
No, I don't, I don't think whether the hotel there is there. I would, I guess I would respond that, and and this is me, you know, you guys may feel differently about it, but I guess I would look at it that. There is a hotel there, but the similar use is not because of that, the hotel they're proposing. The similar use is because. The use is similar to a hotel, the way they are proposing the use. The RV park as a short stay facility. Is similar in use to a hotel, whether there's a hotel next to it or not. The use, the way it's been proposed, is a similar use.
Makes it simple, makes it much more simple in my mind.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So, so you're right, they may, they may find a a franchise, a a franchise that's like, we don't wanna deal with, you know, part C of your, uh if you, we just wanna deal with B, which is the hotel. Um again, then we'll use determination. It's not similar because it's next to a hotel, it's similar because it's like a hotel in that it it allows short term stays. So define short term stay, put that condition on there. Say, we're gonna limit you to five days for your short term stay. And then. Again, I'm gonna go back to what something I said earlier, let the market drive it. If if they find a franchisee who wants to take on both, then that franchise can take on both. If they don't. And they wanna continue to pursue the development as proposed, they'll have a hotel with an operator, they'll have a restaurant with an operator. And they may very well have an RV park with an operator. Might be the same, could be different. I think they're thinking about it as being the same.
Right.
It's like, you know, so I again, by using that analogy, comes up to the same thing that I uh somebody had mentioned. What's the difference between the RV and then putting a tent on the site?
Um. So I think there's a couple of things, again, and you guys could think about a condition. You could add a condition that limited it to short term stay in five to five days. And they did talk about RVs being newer RVs or RVs that were in good condition. I think you could add to that condition uh no tents. I mean, if you're concerned about that, then then limit, put the sidebars on it, make, give it the limits that you think it needs.
But it's still a recreational vehicle, which is an outdoor activity. You know, I don't go in my RV to park next to. Uh restaurant in a in a motel. I go in my RV to get away from people, to go to the outdoors, to spend time outside, not in an apartment.
So, I don't, yeah, I I just, I can't get on board with the RV park there.
Is there any further questions? No, not 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 for me. Okay, is there any? More discussion from the planning commission? Yeah, I don't know. I I there's. So I guess one thing we need to find out is if the. Developer, the owners are willing to separate. The RV park from this to be dealt with later. Um. And if we're going to consider the RV park. What is short term to everybody? And a short term include full hookup. So water power sewer.
Right.
Or a singular dump site.
Well, I think they propose what that each site is going to have as a strategy. Might. Where we're trying to, the art of the best. Decision is, is it light use? Yet. From. State of Oregon. And from what we have in our current. Definitions. Um I I'm not able to make that bridge of similar use because I look at RV the same as camping. And so that's, and to me is, are we looking, you know, are we gonna have a a screw of parking lots that are short term RV sites? Hence, we we've opened that. That door versus having that brick and mortar. Uh well, that area zone.
I guess for me, I don't, um. I can get my head around that this is similar to somebody going from A to B, maybe they're on their way. To go camping somewhere to recreate. But they can't make it in, oh, you know, a day, or they can't get. Um. Something down at the river, just stay for one night to make it to the next place, so they just need somewhere to stop for one or two days. And then move on to where they're actually going to. Or recreate. So I don't necessarily, in my mind, equate that an RV is, that they would have. Reached their. Um in destination by that time, just to be pulled over to stay in a hotel for a night.
But we already have, we already have that ability for them to pull off the freeway and go up less than a mile that way. For one night. Almost, almost eighty percent of the time.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we truly do. I mean, I don't know very many people that have ever been turned away down there, except in the summer when it was slam packed full right around the fourth.
Right, and that's what I have, that's my misunderstanding.
We have spent so much money and time down there to make it the cridest place on the river, everybody knows that.
So, so I I'm gonna, um. Our uh latest attorney is is on Zoom tonight, and he did uh provide me a little bit of insight here, um. So I'm I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna tell you what he said here. You need to approve or deny the application that is in front of you, not half of it, so. You can, you can, at the end of this, you can say. Come back and rework. We were, you could not, well, you'd be careful in denying it because there's a waiting period. Um so, um.
What do you mean by that? Be careful.
Well, if you deny it, it's a six, if there's a time limit before they can come back with another application.
Right, but according to him, we don't have any choice if we don't agree with it. But to deny it, because we can't deny it, just that one part, set that one part aside for future consideration or whatever.
So, I think.
I'm not gonna approve it, it would be our beach.
Okay, well.
It would have to be denied in order for them to come back with a a different condition.
Again, we've got six, one, two, three, four, five, six, six planning commissioners who, you know, you guys are gonna need to come to some agreement here. Um there can be dissenting votes. Um. But. You know. Yay or nay, up or down, uh do you wanna talk about, if you wanna continue it and ask for some very specific things to come back? Do you want to, do you wanna deny it? Do you wanna approve it? Do you wanna approve it with additional conditions?
Well, do we take throttle, or how do we move forward here? I mean, as far as.
I would encourage someone to make a motion and see what happens with it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we that we take quick um. The straw poll and see where we stand.
So make a motion to approve, deny, to approve a condition.
Either approve it with conditions. Or deny it.
But that's not.
To approve as.
So we can either approve the application as presented. We can approve the application with the listed conditions, or you can add conditions. So there's there's three ways. Are are we done with discussion? I mean, Jamie, do you have any input or any thought? I mean.
Um, I, this has been very interesting conversation, I've been soaking it all in, I would have to agree that um. I see RV is is recreational, and I think that when it becomes. Um, that temporary stay, we're really opening up our. The opportunity for, because we have such a ginormous construction going on in Boardman, that it's going to meet the needs of that. Whatever that term that we put, five days, seven days, leave for a day and come back. I just, I can't see that, I can't see that it's similar to a hotel whatsoever, because RV to me says recreation, it doesn't say hotel. They're just, I don't see the similarities, so that's just my two cents on it.
I'll move to approve as presented by the staff.
So are you approving the application as presented with the conditions?
Yep, just as, yes, as is.
As is, as is.
We got it. Yeah, yes, it's all. Yeah, with what we got, no changes. You gotta have a second vote, so just die.
Okay, no second. Decision is now dead. There any discussion or would somebody else like to make?
I don't, I don't know what to, I mean, I can make a motion if somebody gives me what the conditions are that they want, but I don't know what those are. If they want, if it, I'll move to deny it in totality.
Well, if we're doing it based on how it is written and how it's presented, I will make a motion to deny it. As um, as as it is written, I would like to see it without the RV park.
Can we finish the discussion a little bit? So um, I just wanna make sure, because the attorney, I assume uh he's online right there. Because we have three choices, we can uh move to approve site design as amended, discuss proposed changes. And that does not include the removal of the RV park, is that correct? So we can approve his plan except for the change in similar use. Yes or no? No, okay.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair. That you have to approve or deny the application that's in front of you, you 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 don't get to. Slice and dice the application and only approve the parts that you like, right? So you have to approve the application that's in front of you, which is for a combined hotel RV park. Um, if you believe all or part of it does not meet your approval standards, then you can deny it. Um, it would help if you could tell us which approval standard you think it doesn't meet, so we can write the findings. But if you think it doesn't meet the approval standards, then we'll write the findings um and you can deny it on that basis. Um, alternatively, if the applicant wants, they can ask you to continue it and give them an opportunity to modify the application. Um, otherwise, if it's denied, um, then. Uh, Carla is correct, uh, under your code, they can't resubmit it for six months, but they could. You know, come back in six months with a new application for just the part that they think can get approved. But tonight, for tonight's purposes, you have to approve or deny the application that's in front of you, not just a part of it.
I'm worried, can they move, um, can the applicant? Go around us and go straight to the city council? No, no, they have to come through here, don't they? That's what I thought, I was just checking for another.
They could appeal your decision.
Yes.
But they would, it would be based on your decision.
But would that? So. If a commission denies. They could appeal to the city council?
They could.
Then. And city council could approve that if city council denied, it wouldn't come back here. I'm trying to, how can you do it without? Um, having to wait the six months, is there a way to get around that?
Well, and I I think actually, um, so I think Chris makes a good suggestion here, um, if. I mean, it would be great to have a real understanding of how many of you this evening are just a no because of the RV park. If there's a majority of you that are a no because of the RV park. Then then they probably should stand up and say, please just continue it, we will bring it back as a modified request. That saves them time and we get out of this.
Yes.
Um, but I think until we have some clarity on, is there a majority of you who are denying because of the RV park? I don't think we really know that, so so ma- maybe there is some benefit in that straw poll. Um, if. If there is a majority of you that can get to yes with some additional conditions. Then I think that's a reasonable path as well, so. Based on that chair iron, vice chair irons, maybe, maybe there is a quick straw poll of. You know, are there four of you that are just a no if the RV park was part of it, and if we know that. That I think the applicant can reasonably stand up and ask you to continue this. To allow them to modify their application and bring it back at it, maybe a date time specific, and if not, we can renotice it. We probably should renotice it because it will be a, uh, it will have modifications that would be deemed significant.
So by consensus. Who would be a no? Because of the RV park. It would be without additional information or additional um.
A clear no, a clear no. Commissioner Cambray?
Could you say that one more time? I wanna make sure I was understood, be a no without the RV park?
Right, so we're trying to determine is is your, are you a no vote because the RV park is part of it?
Yes, I am a no vote because the RV park is part of it.
So that's a majority consensus. Is there?
I had three. I I had Commissioner Landstrom, I had those, well, Mr. Connell was a a a no unless there's changes.
Yeah, I think we would have, I I don't necessarily care to have it gone completely, but I think that. I would like to see if it's gonna be a temporary, it needs to be temporary, like two days. Or something that live along that, like five day a week is is too much. I mean, I hope you can stay at a hotel for sixty days if you want to pay every day. So and then again, that goes back to the similar, I'm gonna just say no. That's all there's to it. Because because I go back to that similar use thing. Either way, I just, I don't see that they're gonna be able to meet it. So no.
You are not.
That's four. You are not both kind of.
So I guess at this point in time, uh, Chris, just step in if I'm wrong, but I'm gonna ask the applicant. Would you like to ask for a continuance at this point in time?
Yes. Do I need to stand here?
No, I think that's sufficient.
Uh, so I'll need a motion for. One question, so we'll need to um renotice, right, so is that a thirty day, I don't. January obviously wouldn't work, so we're talking February, perfect.
Okay, let me consult my calendar. I think we're getting tied to January to um to get notice. But we might be able to, so let me just get to my calendar here, and, oh, that's the calculator, not the calendar. What are you thinking, Chris?
But I just wanted to point out procedurally, um. You don't need to renotice anything, if you set a date tonight, that's sufficient notice, you don't have to mail notice. Uh, but the thing is, if the applicant is requesting continuous, we should get, we uh get it on the record at least. That the applicant also extends the hundred and twenty days by the uh the same amount.
Right. Thank you, yes, you're right. Okay, so. I guess a couple of questions in January, um, we don't have to renotice.
February would be better.
February would be better, okay, so we're asking for continuance to February, so the date is on your agenda, the bottom of the agenda. Um, second page, there's the date for the February. So we would need a motion to continue specifically to that daytime and location would be here. Um, we won't notice, we're continuing to a daytime specific, and we would want you to. So there's a hundred and twenty day requirement, we want to ask you to waive that. Um, I mean, we're gonna be kind of late, you're asking for February, we're gonna get it on the February agenda, but that the decision date may very well. Push us beyond a hundred and twenty days for local appeals to get to the final decision, so we'd ask you to waive that. The number of days necessary, basically the sixty days between now and then. So we're actually going to a hundred and eighty days for that initial position, but we're gonna get there as quickly as we can in February.
Yes, is that what?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, okay.
I make a motion that we. Make a continuance on this issue till February twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. For the applicant to be able to.
That's, I need time and place, that's pretty much.
Seven P M. At Boardman City Hall in the council chambers.
Thank you.
Kind of have to be addressed, right?
No.
All all seconded, but do we have to state what information we want at that point? Or is this discussion enough to?
But but let's wait and see what the applicant comes back with.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay, so are you second? Sure, I'll second it, okay.
I have a motion a second for a continuance set for February twenty first at seven P M. Here at the city hall in the council chambers.
Hey, so, uh, vote, uh, Commissioner Harbord?
Yes.
Commissioner Connell?
Yes.
Commissioner Landstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Leighton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenai?
No.
Vice chair irons?
Yes.
Okay, so the matter is continued. We'll be in touch, or you'll be in touch. Uh, Chair Irons, do we think like a five minute?
Yes. What time is it? Is it their rule would start a meeting after like almost nine o'clock? We didn't start it. From that, it would be almost eight fifty.
Yeah, it'd be all night.
Most problem? It it is, yeah, I have to wake up at four A M.
Well, I'm taking a break, so.
All right, we are back from recess. Going to open public hearing on amendment A dash, B, D, C dash, two, three, dash, zero, zero, one, is called for order. City of Boardman is the applicant, this request is to amend chapter three decimal four, public facility standards. Uh, section three decimal four decimal zero, 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 purpose and applicability, item E. Applicability of the Boardman Development Code. To allow the city to defer construction of certain improvements until such time as the adjacent property develops. Criteria for approval are found. Are found at the B D C chapter four decimal seven, land use district map and ten amendments. It is being processed as a type. Five four four decision, sorry. With final hearing for the city council. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows, staff report, public testimony in the following order. Staff may provide additional information, any testimony in support of the application, any testimony opposing the application. Any usual testimony and the applicant's rebuttal if it needs them. We will then close the public testimony, after the record is closed for testimony, no other testimony will be heard from anyone less than planning commission has a specific question. The planning commission may ask questions of staff, after which the planning commission will discuss the matter. The planning commission may make final decision tonight that would result in a recommendation to the city council. Or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future, if the matter is continued, this will be the only notice of that time and date we will receive. If you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form and submit it to the associate planner or the city clerk. I will recognize those people wishing to speak. Any question should be addressed through me. Please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. As the hearing is being recorded, please keep testimony concise and to the point, testimony should be. All the testimony should be on the action under consideration and address the substantive criteria. The criteria that apply to the decision are listed in staff report. Testimony on other issues will be rejected and not considered by the planning commission. Failure to raise an issue in sufficient detail to allow the planning mission. And the party's ability to respond to the issue prohibits and field to the land use board of appeals based on that issue, similarly. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues regarding any conditions of approval in sufficient detail. To allow the planning commission to respond to the issue prohibits a law. Or inhibits a lawsuit in circuit court on that basis. Now I ask members of the planning commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest. And indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Hearing none, does anyone in the audience wish to challenge a planning commissioners impartiality? Hearing none. We're going to move to the staff report.
I have to sit at a different table, I kick that every time I move. So the proposed amendment on this before you tonight, uh, to the Board of Development Code is very narrow, a narrowly defined amendment. Uh, it is a result of a series of appeals related to work that the city took on to plan to implement the Ace Land. Uh, south of the Port Memorial interchange, uh, and that one that was done is in the Department of the Port Memorial Interchange Area Man Plan. It works, uh, it was, it it intent was to implement the loop codes in that vicinity. Uh, proposed change to a very narrow section, section two point four point zero, 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 point B. Uh, this is a process that's a type four, so tonight's action, uh, as the conclusion will lead to a recommendation to the city council. Either approve, I believe was not, approve the modifications or to deny. Um. The city's development code is a little out of date, it doesn't have a lot of components to it that one might want, um. There are three factors uh that we look at, when we look at changes to the um. Development code or comprehensive plan uh or map changes. The first one deals with statewide planning goals, uh, and in a review of the comprehensive plan and the, well, in the review of the statewide planning goals. We determined that goal ones is involvement, goal tool coordination, goal nine, economic needs, goal eleven, public facilities, and goal twelve, transportation. Uh, could be deemed applicable to this, and in the staff report, we talk about each of those goals. And provide some information um about it from the uh, the perspective of the statewide planning goals as well as. The second item uh that we're uh required to look at is, is the approval consistent? Um, is the approval of the request, excuse me, consistent with the comprehensive planning, and again, we look at the, the same, the same goal, goal one. Uh, which is community hall, then goal two is about um how you plan, goal nine is economic development, goal eleven. Uh, is uh public facilities. And then goal twelve is the tran- uh, transportation, and in our case, the transportation system plan. Serves to really inform our goal twelve. So we do in the staff report, um, wholesome, a couple of policy statements out of the comprehensive plan and incorporate them. As well as just some general narrative in support. Uh, third reason really is, um. Uh, third reason really is, um, more focused on an action that would be on a specific piece of property. Uh, maybe a map change, um, this is a text change and is not applied to a specific piece of property. So the third group criteria is, the property and affected area is presently provided with adequate public facility services and transportation networks to support the use of such facilities, services, and transportation networks are planned to be provided concurrently with the development of the property. So as we stated here, that there's no specific property that's affected by this proposed amendment. And the way the amendment is written, I, I think I wanna draw this clarity out, the way the amendment is written is specific to allowing us, the city itself, to waive compliance with one or more of the development standards for our public improvement project constructed by the city or another public agency of the city, um. Finds that the standards are not necessary or likely going to be provided by adjacent private development. And so specifically what, um, this amendment is attempting to do is identify that if the city comes in and does a road improvement, and they just do the road improvement, they put the water in the ground, they put the, the wastewater in the ground, and they put the pavement on top. But the city can look at that and say, this is an area that is lightly developed or undeveloped at this point in time, and future development will come in and install the sidewalk, the curb, the gutter, um. Assure that, uh, there's a, a street light on the corner, uh, because as of the time the city puts the sidewalk in, those amenities may not be needed at this point in time. Uh, we know that developers are gonna come in and develop that adjacent property and provide those, um, additional components. Um, so that, that's kind of the, the, the thrust maybe behind the amendment, so, um, some of you sat through a series of actions and appeals, um, that were happening and when did I start, twenty two? So I guess those appeals started in late twenty one, and went into probably the summer of twenty two. So there was about nine months of that activity, and then those, those, there's been further appeals of those to Luba, um, and where, um. We're just, we're at this point, though, we're looking to, um, amend the code to kind of address really the policy decisions, this reflects the policy decisions, I think, that the that the council made as they approved, um, the various uh, either decisions or appeals of decisions, um, at the city council level. So we're really just trying to take the policy that was acted on and put it into the development codes specifically. Um. You did receive a letter. Uh, the only attachment is the draft text language, which is the last page, it has it in red, what we're proposing to add. Uh, you did receive a letter from leaving in yesterday. Um, from Wendy, uh, from Callington Law Group. I would ask that you add that letter, my motion to, to the record. Uh, we also received a thumb drive um, from uh, Mr. Coleman, and I would ask that you would add that to the record as a, uh, oversized, we would label it oversized exhibit. Uh, it's the Luba record from the previous action, um, it's referenced in Ms. Callington's letter. Well, Luba number two thousand and twenty-two dash oh six two. So, uh, on the first page of the letter, it's just the, um, the, um, bolded information.
Okay, yeah, I would read them quickly and I.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So that's, that was the stated thumb drive that would be brought.
Right, so we need to add a letter and then add a thumb drive, even oversized examples.
Other than motion. I make a motion that we accept the uh, letter from Keller Law Room, uh, dated December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, as well as the, uh, flash drive of information, uh, related to the, uh, Luba uh, decision, uh. Two zero two two dash zero six two, into the record. I said him. Need your discussion. I have a roll call waiting.
Uh, so a little late, Commissioner Harbord?
Yes.
Commissioner Connell?
Yes.
Commissioner Landstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Layton?
Yes.
Commissioner Canine?
Yes.
Vice Chair Irons?
Yes.
The city is the applicant, um, and we reserve the right for rebuttal. Uh, Chris, did you want to add anything at this point, or do you want to reserve our time as rebuttal?
Um. Yeah, I don't, I don't think I have anything to add at this point that, uh, you had, didn't already touch on in your staff report.
Okay.
Let's, we'll, we'll wait and answer any questions the planning commission may have as our rebuttal.
Does anybody wish to speak in favor of the application? Does anybody wish to speak against the application? Up to the podium and your name and address, please.
Yeah, there have been following seven oh six, not, uh, um, there's also the Luba case on there that I sent over that shows that it, um, that, uh, that they, that there has to be nine reflectors, that has to be seventy-five to eighty, the new arterial, uh, loop road, so it has to have sidewalks, um. Uh, street lights as well too, there, is that not on there, Carla?
Yes, what, they, they, they just accepted that as the record.
I don't think it's on that thumb drive, I, I, I emailed it over. Uh, I just wanna make sure that that is attached, the Luba case is attached.
That's what's on here.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that, that, that even though you say it's on uh, that, I wanna make sure that if it's not there, it will be attached to it.
Mr. Paul, I read the case number and say that's what we've accepted.
Okay, from Luba.
From Luba, okay, it's supposed to be on the, on the file, awesome.
Okay, so you can see my, my attorney's letter, uh, I forget about AP, but uh, I, I just kinda wanna give a brief overview of what happened. Basically, we, we won two cases. Uh, uh, appealed the, the commission. Uh, they said that they didn't have to, you know, change it, went to city council, city council said, okay, we don't have to change it. Then I went to Luba, Luba said, oh wait, you have to redo, and you have to add. It is not sixty feet wide, it actually has to be seventy, uh, seventy-five feet wide as far as the loop road. Uh, this case, as far as the policy change, is just because I couldn't explain the nation on this. I'm asking, I asked, uh, during the appeal process, let's sit down and work together, I'm still pleading with you guys. Let's sit down, let's work together, let's get the road built correctly, done the right the first time, so we don't have problems. Uh, one of the issues that I also have is I remember Mayor Keifer saying, if you're inside the city limits, you're paying for water and sewer um, taxes and, and the bond, then you get water and sewer. I still don't have sewer on for the city. I, uh, this loop road is the only way that I've been told that I get sewer. I'm paying taxes on sewer and I'm not getting sewer to my property. Uh, that, that is a big issue with me, and for, for that policy change, this is just a policy change just for this case, that's all this is for. Go ahead and read, please read, it's three hundred and ninety-seven pages, and, uh, it's about eight pages of my letter. Read through all, all the things that need to be done the correct way, and all I was asking is for this road to be done correctly. When we, when we got the offer from the city, okay? They said it was a developer that had to pay for it, and I said, well, you are the developer, you guys have committed yourself to this loop road. Why can't we get it done the fir- right the first time? Everybody said, oh, well, the city just wouldn't respond back to me. And when you look at the facts, when you look at the, the specifics of it, it, it is very frustrating. Carla, at the, uh, the hearing before, you said, I welcome to work with developers, I welcome to work with those people.
Jonathan.
Yeah, I, I, I'm begging for that to be done in this case as well too, to work with the developers in this case. Uh, so when, when she says that she did it, I'm asking for it to be done right here in that scenario like that. So, uh, that, that's, that's an issue that I, I really take, take heed with, because we're supposed to, you know, work together as a team to get it done, and then to have it on them and not me, on, on, on a case, I, I, I really take issue with that. Um. Uh, the sewer and the policy change, uh, is just for me. Um, again, this is an unlawful road, this policy change is just specifically so that the city doesn't have to, uh, develop a piece of property that they legally have to. I will spend more money, okay, the city will have to pay, it's already spent millions of dollars to get this blue road, this unlawful, and there'll probably be millions more plus court costs. I put in a public records request to see how much Chris Cream, uh, cost, because I don't know what it is, and I'm asking how much the costs are for the Hammond group, because that he was just hired, uh, uh, to go against me on these cases that I have. I wanna know exactly how much this is costing, and as residents of Boardman, I think you guys should be very concerned with that. Uh, it's, it's been very frustrating, and I welcome to work with you guys to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Does anybody have any usual testi- testimony? Does the applicant wish to provide a rebuttal?
Chris?
Yeah, um. Uh, thank you, Carla, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the planning commission, uh, there there are several things that, uh, I do want to address, that I think are important for the planning commission to consider. Uh, the first is that this is a legislative decision, and it's driven by what you believe is good policy, public policy for the city, it's not just a quasi judicial decision where you're limited to the criteria in your, uh, development code, so um, if you believe this, um, text amendment represents good public policy, you can vote for it. The reason for this change is, as Mr. Tallman suggests, uh, derived from that court case, which highlighted a shortcoming in your development code. The Devon Loop, Yates Lane Loop, whatever you wanna call it, um, was built by the city, and there's a provision in your development code that says when a street is built, it has to include bike lanes and sidewalks and street trees and streetlights. The city built that road, um, as part of implementing the interchange access management plan that you've entered into with ODOT, and it's now tra- part of your transportation system plan, but equally important, it spurs development in that area. There are net, there is now a road in front of a, a lot of property there that is currently vacant and undeveloped. So you heard earlier tonight in that prior application, you were just considering how that applicant was gonna have to pave the road. These property owners now no longer have to build a road, it's a great benefit to them. But at the same time, the city said, look, we're not gonna build the sidewalks and put in street trees and streetlights, because as those properties develop, the developer will have to put those in. So what this does is represents a good investment of public tax dollars. Why would you build sidewalks that are gonna have to be ripped out when the evasive, adjacent property develops and they have to put in driveways? Or take out a streetlight, maybe that you put in the wrong place, or street trees. What this policy, what this change does is allow the city to defer the construction of those amenities until the adjacent property develops, so you end up with what is effectively a public-private partnership with the city building the road and putting the sewer lines and the water lines, and then the adjacent property owners putting in the sidewalks and street trees and streetlights when they develop. So that those costs are shifted to the private development, so the private development pays for itself, at least in part. Because keep in mind, the city also built that road, so now the developers don't have to. It's a real cost, it's a kind of a win-win for everybody, if you will. But your code doesn't currently allow that outcome. So what this, this code amendment does is allows the city to defer construction of those, uh, you know, amenities, the sidewalks, the street trees, until the adjacent property develops, at which time you put a condition of approval on that developer that they have to build, they have to install the sidewalks and the, and the streetlights and so on. So that's the reason for this text amendment, it applies citywide, it's not as Mr. Tallman suggested, just for this property or just for this project, it applies citywide, because it's a good use of public tax dollars to build the roads, but defer construction of the sidewalks and street trees and so on, and allow those costs to be borne by the developer of the adjacent properties. So that's the reason for this, this amendment. Um, every time there's a court case, it tends to highlight, um, strengths and weaknesses in the development code, and this court case uh, highlighted this particular wrinkle in your development code that we're trying to fix tonight. So I, I don't know that there's much more, I, I have to, even I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So, obviously, this is spring, is, is this the loop road that's over by the packed pride, and then that house that has a vineyard or used to have a vineyard?
Right, right, that, that's, that's, that is the road, it is under contention, but to be clear.
But that's, but that's what everybody's using as the example of, we put in a road and let, okay, thank you.
Yes, yes. But as, as, um, Mr. Green said, the change would be applicable to any future road.
Right, right.
I, I shouldn't say would be, could be. It doesn't, it doesn't, the city could say, no, in this case, we're gonna put in this amenity or that amenity, or we're gonna defer if, if the problem sometimes with putting in sidewalks is then developer comes along and rips them out, because that's what they want their access point, or they have to rebuild them, so sometimes there's, uh, you, you're expending funds that are just going to be wasted in some of those instances, so there could be other locations where this would happen, there could be location, you know, it may or may not be used, but it, it's a, it's a good opportunity for the city to come in and do those improvements. Um.
Yeah, and, uh, um, thank you, Carla, Mr., Mr. Chair, if I, there's one thing, change I would like to suggest in the text, where it's the, the city can waive compliance with those requirements, it should say defer, we don't really, we don't mean to waive the requirement for sidewalks and street trees, what we wanna do is defer it until the adjacent property develops. But that's that, otherwise, I think the language is fine, and it achieves the purp- the policy purpose.
So if you're looking at the color version, it's the where the red starts, except if the city may, the leadway can.
Yeah.
So, this is where I could ask a question.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so um, in the event land, um, prob- the road is already there, just kinda what we have with Lamb Weston, but they are putting the sidewalks, but we approved, and then we would want them to come back. Do we have anything in the code that addresses that, that once the property has been developed, the road's there, the adjacent land has been developed, do you have any recourse to go back and get the, um, uh, bills on, on adjacent property that already has been improved to put in a sidewalk or a light? Uh, or that comes back to the city doing it then, right?
Generally, no, so, you know, we have a lot of, we have a lot of development that is pre-existing
Yeah.
for a development code, so when they do substantial improvements, we can require that they comply with the code as it is today. So, I mean, that was kind of the conversation Lamb Weston. Um, and we, that, that we're gonna get to them having a sidewalk there, but we have as a city identifying, we've been building the map of where all the places that we don't have sidewalks, and we're gonna try to figure out through the budget process at a capital improvement program to put that sidewalk in, in some cases, hopefully, public-private, in other cases, we're just gonna figure out how to, you know, we've got, we need to make requirements around state parks and schools and things like that.
Sure.
And they had the issue in the place we just discussed before, the hotel boat, uh, I asked that question about the sidewalk, and they're gonna, they're gonna be the ones required to put it in.
Right, because it is part of development.
Yeah.
Right. And I understand too, they're also building that portion of road that is in front of their
Right.
property. Yes.
And that was required by us.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, the cost of development includes development, includes the road, you know, if there's not a road in front of you, you need to put the road in. Now, sometimes some cities allow past streets, um, in this one, the property on the, well, let's not get into the last application, let's leave that aside, yes.
Right, and that's what I was, it's pre-existing property that's been developed, so if we were to say, um, somebody comes in and wants to develop the adjacent property to So if we were to say, um, somebody comes in and wants to develop the adjacent property to the loop road or the Devon Loop or whatever, um, and they're just doing a small section, then they just do it for that small section, right?
Right, right, so, so Joe buys a piece of property, they're gonna come in and they're gonna put a tire shop in.
Yep.
So the portion of their property that runs the installed road, they will have to put in the curb, the gutter, the sidewalk. And if there's a need to put in, if their development drives a need for a fire hydrant, uh, street light, those amenities would be required as part of that development. Yeah.
Yes. And then somebody comes along down the road. This can be pieced, pieced bill if need be, which could, and the other side doesn't get developed, just that adjacent piece. So you could have lots of just chunks.
You could have chunks.
Okay. Mm-hmm, I just wanted to make sure of that. And I don't think there's any way around that at all.
No, I mean, a way around it would be if Joe and Sam own two pieces of property and there's a piece in between them, you know, and they're doing it at the same time, hey, while you're doing that, which is wanting to work with the interim property owner and help get the curb and gutter in.
Future developer shows up, buys the whole, whole thing and puts it on.
Right.
Well, I'm with that question. Um, it's a developer buys a Jason property and is only developing one piece of it, he doesn't have to develop the whole thing, even though he's purchased it.
Well, and, and that.
He doesn't have to do that till he develops, right?
Right, I mean, that, that, but, but we also often time work, often times work with developers to make sure that the stretch of property, the stretch of road from where, from here to the development is also accomplished. So there could be, that development could trigger us to have a conversation, now there has to be a nexus. I mean, we, we have that, those, those legal requirements requiring a nexus between what we're requiring and what the development is creating. You know that well, so, um, but, but that's that conversation with the developer.
I'm just trying, if we're going to make this amendment, that we've thought it through enough that, that we're picking up as many things as we plan and different scenarios. And I do think that this does it after what I might have presented, but I want to make sure we've kind of looked at those things.
Right.
And I'm sure you have, but.
Yeah, yeah, and, and it's interesting because the, 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 actually, the development code, the terms, commercial development code actually says a sidewalk or a path. It doesn't say just sidewalk.
Right.
So it's, it's A or B, and we've actually been talking internally about having that conversation with some of the landowners on the east side about, okay, when we trigger this, do you want to do a sidewalk or would you prefer to do a path? Because the code would allow by her. Yeah.
So I, I, I guess part of it is, is I, I look at, um, you know, as was stated when, when I came to the city council meeting, my wife and I, we walk everywhere and I'm, I'm telling you, there's, you put a road in and people just go faster. So where you were walking on dirt, you're now taking your life into your own hand. And I just, for me, it just seems amiss that the, that we wouldn't uh put in the entire infrastructure if we're going to take that, that stance. And mostly because I, I dealt with this with planning, um, where we came from before and we ended up with, like what you're dealing with, having to now partner with Lamb Weston to continue sidewalks uh, and, and those kinds of things, where if we're going to build a road, we should be setting the standard. If a developer comes in and he needs to change it, we put in the sidewalks, we put in the infrastructure. This is what it costs us at this time, but you're building four years later, you have to then cover those costs. And then if you need to change it, you're responsible for where you want your egresses from. So for me, I just, I, I, I just get concerned that we're going to do, you know, half the work. Um, and then we'll have a, a, a bunch of unsecure and unsafe accesses for, like we have bike accesses, pedestrian accesses, you have a residence that's in that, in that area that was used as the example. So we built a road, but we didn't put in a path, we didn't put anything like that.
So I think it's, yeah, but I think there's another, there's another real important component to that, Commissioner Linton.
Yeah.
Um, the city didn't have to put the road in.
It, it is.
Wasn't it tied to the Department of Transportation deal?
So the, the we close the public hearing?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
No, we're still in questions of the applicant.
Okay. So we're on rebuttal then. I just want to be, I want to be clear about others' ability to.
Yeah. You like him speaking.
So, um, so, yes, there is an adopted interchange area management plan. It does have a loop road requirement. There is a development trigger for that. Um, there were a lot of conversations that led up to the city making the decision to take on building the road. And um when the city made that decision, the focus was on the road. Um, and the determination to um defer those amenities was, was somewhat driven by budget, somewhat was driven by what type of development there had been. Um, how far does the dollar go? What is the responsibility of the future developer? So um, the city could have made the decision to not do that road. The city could have also made the decision to, to begin requiring the road improvements of the person, of the developers that were doing that work. Um, so there were safety and there were fiscal considerations that went into that decision-making process to build that road. Now, a lot of that was done before I came on board at the city, but some of those conversations started while I was still at the county. So I heard some of those conversations at the, at the beginning and I was not involved for a couple of years and then kind of came in at the back end here. But um, the city looked at, at what the I A M P said and I think made a gesture, grand gesture in saying, we're gonna, we're gonna do this part of it and we're gonna leave the sidewalk, the curb, the gutter, um, the street lights, um, you know, maybe the additional fire hydrant or whatever might be needed as development occurs to occur, to, to be the responsibility of the people who own the joint property and are going to, and would be developing that property.
And, and I, I would, a, a couple of things that I would add to that. One is the cit, the Interchange Access Management Plan that contemplates this road is part of the city's transportation system plan, which covers the entire city. And there are a lot of roads on that transportation system plan that haven't been built yet. And so the city has the discretion which ones to build in what order. Um, and it could have, as Carla said, just simply decided to build some other road and not this one and then you wouldn't have anywhere to walk, right, with or without traffic. Um, the second thing is, um, there's an economic development aspect to this that is important to the city. Because there's a road there now, the thought is that will spur development of that area, which adds to the city's tax base, that provides jobs, it provides all the things that you want from development. And the development then will pick up the cost of the sidewalks and street lamps. A third thing, sorry, I said two, I meant three. The third thing is that if you put in full sidewalks and curbs and street trees and everything, some portion of that is going to just be ripped out when the property develops because they're going to have to put in driveways, the construction traffic alone and equipment is going to damage uh other stuff, even where the driveways aren't. So it's, y- you'd be wasting taxpayer dollars. And the policy decision was made not to do that, to put in the road, to spur the economic development, to try to achieve some portion of compliance with the Interchange Access Management Plan and at the same time defer some of the costs to the private sector when those properties develop. So while I appreciate the concerns about pedestrians walking in the street, there are other goals also uh at play with this, in this decision.
Well, Mr. Green, it's, it's not just about that access point. It's, it's, it's also referring to additional roads that they might build. It gives them the ability to say, well, wait till houses are built on the street and therefore we're not going to put in sidewalks and safe access.
Right.
Um, you know, I live in one of the new developments and once I leave my neighborhood, there, there's no safe access um in, until you cross the street. I mean, it's very mixed, um, going to some of the older neighborhoods of, of this community. And so I, I guess, I guess my, my discussion is, um, there's a lot of assessment or a lot of building throughout the state of Oregon where the entire thing is put in when government elects to do that. And then those fees are then recharged back to the developer as transportation improvement. So it's not like the, the city is losing money. They're just making a pre-development investment and then get it recouped when somebody elects to come in, which makes.
Sorry, how do you recover the money? How do you do that?
They get the transportation improvement. When they want to build and develop there, they have to pay for the existing structure that was put in for them. And if they want to make changes, they pay for that.
I, I, I'm not aware of a mechanism to recover prior, like, costs of sidewalk in, installation.
I, I, I can provide that for the city. And we, we've had to do it um on the other side of the cascade range, in, in multiple locations, both cities and counties. Because they needed to develop the thing so that people would come in, but they put in the whole infrastructure.
I, I'm familiar with the fee and loo mechanism, that's prior to development or installation of the improvements. After the improvements have been installed, I'm not aware of a mechanism to recover the cost.
It's, it's, it's transportation improvement fees when property changes hands. And they want to develop.
I'm, I'm not aware that that's, that's a, those provisions are in, in the Boardman Development Code or elsewhere in the municipal codes. That would have to be added.
I, I, I understand that, that there is, there is a mechanism in place if we elect to do that. I get my concern is, is we're the city, we're trying to set an example and we're doing partial. Uh, and then I come back to when was the, when, you know, when we say we're going to build this road and it never gets developed, was that, was that a sound investment too? I mean, that's, that's the thing, you have a residence that's there. When are they going to develop their property and put in the sidewalks? Those are the things that if we're going to build something, I, I, I don't think we should be shortcutting it. The other thing is street lights are really nice on every road. And I, I don't see how we can do that, even, even your uh mayor was commenting that he would like to see more street lights. So, you know, whenever we build a road, are we making them safe? That's just, that's where I'm going with this. I just, we're, we're, we're kind of changing what, what was originally in the code. And so I think we need to have these discussions and you are the applicant for the city. So I just, I need to make sure I have a clear understanding that today we're going to do this and I understand it's to defer. Um, and if it never gets developed, it never gets taken care of. And what's the mechanism if it's deferred? Because you said that's not in the code currently.
Yeah, so I, it, I mean, those, that's a great discussion, those are all excellent points. Um, and, you know, unfortunately, in the world of economic development, there are no guarantees. It's just, there's a, a significant degree of speculation and the assumption is, um, by assuming the cost of installing the road and, you know, sewer and water lines underneath, that, that uh relieves the developer of the cost and that makes those properties a lot more attractive to develop. The, the gamble is that, that, that will spur development of those adjacent properties. But there, you know, nobody has a crystal ball, there are no guarantees. Um, and all the city can do in the exercise of good public policy is try to uh protect the taxpayer dollars to the extent you can, and that's, uh, that's what we're trying to do here.
Thank you.
I, I would like to add small pieces to that. As soon as we close the, or no, why you voted that?
Then I can't talk.
In your public comment, you can.
But isn't this a public comment or?
No, we're still in the hearing and we are just about to close it.
But before you close it, I would like to rebuttal what he's saying.
The, the city as the applicant had, there was testimony and the city has provided that rebuttal.
What he's saying. But what did he say? I, I, I have a rebuttal for that.
So you already had your chance to speak as the opponent.
Well, what, what he's saying is.
So you, you can bring up your rebuttal points in the public comment section of our agenda.
Actually, no, we can't speak about it, I am on the agenda as part of public comments.
Let him speak, let him speak and see how.
Right.
How should you deal with that?
Speaking now as the city attorney, the applicant has the rebuttal because they have the burden when it, with a land use, with an application such as this. Um, pe, the, the general public is not entitled to rebut just because you disagree with something that the applicant says during its rebuttal period. Rebuttal is reserved to the applicant.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, public testimony portion of this hearing is now closed. Does staff need to respond to any questions or did you raise by the testimony?
I, I think we hit all high points. So I don't think we have any further, I mean, we're happy to answer the questions you may have during the probation, but as staff, but it's, no, I don't think so.
Any discussion with the planning commission? I think I've expressed my concerns about not fully developing.
I would like to just, just give, give my two cents on that, that point that he made and while, while valid and completely understandable. Um, and should not take away from Mr. Tolman uh and his mother's property out there and their business because it is as important as the business on Main Street. It's, it's, it's a part of the community, they've been a part of the community forever. With that being said, that was, that was kind of a, a, a mess down there to begin with, if you understand where it's at, with all of the truck traffic that used to be there or that's still there, probably getting more and more every day. And the loop kind of, kind of helped to some degree if, if people would use it the right way. It, it kind of helped, like, move that traffic away from such a congested section right there at the freeway on off, right? So um, light, as far as lights and all that infrastructure stuff, there's one person that, that truly lives out there, if, if I'm not mistaken, and that's, that's um, um.
Mrs., uh, Mrs. Glenn.
Yeah.
Francie.
Friends. Um, and I can, I can, I promise you, she doesn't leave her house after dark. She doesn't, she doesn't care if there's a light, she probably wants her light. But as far as the sidewalk around that road, I, I'm not sure, I can't speak for her, but I do know that, that, that's all that, that she's the only one out there after he closes his business. Um, there's a lot of, I appreciate the road being there because of what it's done for getting some of that truck traffic coming in and out of the, the Pride, Pacific Pride, had turned that intersection right there into an absolute disaster. I mean, you couldn't pull a small car in there without going like that, I mean, it was, it was just terrible. And there's still people petting in there like they shouldn't be. My point is, is that road has helped a lot of that. And the money that we would spend on infrastructure that may or may not be used for a considerable amount of time could be used down here where it's needed far more. Um, I live right down past the city park and, and our light, our lighting on our street is terrible and we have no sidewalks. At, till you get to a certain point, you walk in front of my house, there's no sidewalk, across the street, there's no sidewalk. Um, so you gotta think about things in a, in a, in a, in a real sense also. I think we have to, we have to, we have to have some common sense when we, when we talk about this because it's done a lot for that area as far as getting some of that truck stuff spread out and that business that's behind there, man, they move, they move a lot of equipment at times. And I think it's helped with, with what goes on there. The money that we would spend out there to finish it, like, like he's asking for, um, and I appreciate that. I think it'd be better spent in town or closer in where development's already done and we need to, we need to fill in the gaps. You know, I mean, I'm going to be a little, just a little bit on the upset side of, if, if we've got a road out there that, that is, is right on the edge, completely developed with fancy street lights and everything and my, my street's been here for fifty years and I, I still don't have a sidewalk. You know what I mean? So um, I understand all points, but I think there's a common sense factor to it also, I'm just saying. That's all.
Oh, no, I see benefit of that loop road.
Yeah, oh, I, I'm thinking, but it says there's not a benefit.
There are any further discussion from the commission? Can motion. The, in motion to move forward with the amendment as identified by the city or as presented and send it to the city council for final consideration.
I'm moving forward, amendment A B's, A B A slash B D C dash twenty-three dash zero zero one.
I would ask that you do that as amended, this would change ways to.
As amended correctly, from waived to defer um, and be presented to the city council for final consideration and appreciate all testimony. And appreciate all testimony.
All second.
I have a motion in a second to move forward with amendment A dash B dash. Or sorry, A dash B D C dash. Twenty-three dash zero zero one. With the amended. Word waiver to differ. And presented to the city council, final. Decision. Can I get roll call vote please?
You can. Commissioner Carberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Connell?
Yes.
Commissioner Landstrom?
No.
Commissioner, Commissioner Layton?
Yeah.
Commissioner Tannen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Irons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Question items. B D C code.
Right, so we. Have been working with a consulting firm by the name of O P A. And they have. Nancy and I spent four weeks of them, so probably five and a half, six hours. We, we, we literally walked through the entire development code. And identified all of the places of. Frustration. In his, in the. I don't, yeah. What you have in your packet is the strategy of, of the issues that we identified. We're trying to kind of wrap this up and we told it, my. My question to you all is, we provided it, but it wasn't part of a big packet and I don't know how much time you were able to spend with it. I would be happy to bring this back to the January meeting and maybe dig into it a little more deeper. And have some conversation around it if you're interested. I just don't know how much you wanna dig into development code. So this gets into the technical stuff and I don't know how much you guys wanna do that. Pardon?
Let's do it.
You wanna dig?
No. No, I, I disagree, I would not like to, I think I'm at full capacity.
Well, and Carla always, already knows what I wanna do. Dig, 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 so as I have my typos and all for tonight. So. So we've got several who wanna dig, we've got at least one person who doesn't wanna dig, so we'll try to make, if we move this into January, uh, first of February, we'll try to make it. Uh, we'll dig it, we'll make it fun, uh, uh, no promises, I don't know. But I, I, I'd really like to get your sense and it's, it's, it's getting late tonight, so it's already nine thirty, so. I, I think it's probably time to, to send this to January. And we'll have a little more discussion about it, so hold on to that as part of your packet and we'll send it back out again. There are two other things in your packet, we've been working to develop some kind of. One of them is this out of speak at a public hearing. We're gonna make this available at planning commission meetings. Uh, but they'll also be available at city council meetings when there is land public hearing or other type of public hearing. And then if Marta likes it, she can use it for her budget committee public hearings as well, so. Um, it's just to try to help people understand, you know, how to testify, what the process is. We'll see how it works, we'll see if we need to make changes to it or refinements, uh, well, somewhere we'll put it on the website. As we go. And then the last, very last item in there, I just hope you guys will see the twenty twenty-four schedule, so you know what. Dates to put on your calendar. July no meeting in June, because the third Wednesday is June. It's a new federal holiday, city hall is closed on that day. We contemplated trying to juggle things and move them around. Um, so we did a little bit, um, what we did is we moved the July meetings forward a week just to kind of accommodate. The length of time between the May and July meeting, so. Given that, this is the proposed calendar for July. What did I say, for June? Oh, yeah, for July, not for the whole year, this is for the calendar for the whole year, so. Uh, if you've got any concerns, let me know, otherwise we'll work with city staff, the meeting is posted and. And we'll make sure that the meeting dates and the. On the web and as we post them on a grid award and things like that reflect.
So just, I'm, I'm looking at when everything has applicant deadline.
Yeah.
Does that mean we'll get the packets sooner than a week, then does it matter?
No, no, we're required.
July holiday and everything else. I wouldn't have a chance.
So the application deadline is, so what happens? We get more into this in, in, I think next month, but just so you understand. We're asking the applicant to submit their packet thirty-five days before the hearing date. In that thirty-five days, we get to deem it complete, now if we don't, if we find it's not complete, we will delay that hearing to following month. Um, at twenty days prior to the hearing, we are required to publish the notice of the hearing. And by notice to adjoint property owners. The packet for the hearing, the staff report is required to be available seven days prior. Uh, and that really allows us the time to just do that work, to develop the staff report. Some of the staff reports are short, fairly simple to do. Others are more involved and it will take more time to get there. What I would tell you is that as we move into a pretty aggressive work plan, um, that we're gonna start in twenty twenty-four. We're gonna be doing a lot of things around code amendments, housing needs analysis, economic opportunities analysis, update comp plan. We're doing some minor surgical amendments, so a couple of documents. As we move into those activities, we'll be working with you well before a hearing. Probably in work sessions, that type of stuff, so you can see, you can see what those proposed amendments are. But when it's a staff report or a conditional use permit or subdivision, you're gonna see those a week prior to the hearing.
The only reason is I'm, I'm looking at that July tenth date. And which puts you running that against the fourth of July holiday weekend as well. And so do we need to move it closer? I mean, what is the commission?
First work for fourth of July, I don't care. Doesn't matter.
Uh, we can leave the July hearing on third, oh, beyond July seventeenth, I mean, we would just try to make sure that an applicant wasn't waiting an excessive period of time between. The opportunity for a May hearing, opportunity for July hearing, it's only a week, but. We're also required by law to meet. To meet. Issue an decision within a hundred and twenty days, so we're just trying to balance all of those parts and pieces. And as applications come in, we may ask you to meet, you know, we've done that before too, ask you to have a special meeting or. Move a meeting date, we've done that before to meet, to meet not only staff needs but commission needs as well, so. I. Yeah, well, I guess we'll be back in July or January, Jan- second July, we'll be back January seventeenth, at this point, there are no public hearings. Um, so we'll just kind of run it as a work session, we're gonna do that according to development code audit and we'll. Commissioner Camore and Commissioner Landstrom will, will provide you guys with some additional information to kind of get you up to speed on some. Some things that the rest of the planning commission has already sat through. And we have two appointments that are pending, so. Uh, we've heard from Commissioner Berisi, he is requesting to be reappointed, right now, how, I don't think we've heard from you.
I haven't, I haven't been able, I don't have a printer right now to print out the letter to request, so as soon as I find a printer, I'll get it to you.
Just send it to me as an electronic letter.
I don't have an email for you.
Just, just send it to something? Yeah, just send it to the email that you get the packet from.
I don't get a packet from you because you don't send it to my right in the law. So I don't get a packet.
I will send, I think I had it right, I'll send you an email tomorrow at right in the line.
Yeah, that would be that work?
Yeah, so you're not getting your city emails?
No.
Okay, so we need to figure out if we can solve that problem too.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we'll work on that.
Yeah, thank you.
I think I have any else.
Okay, we're gonna move into public comment. Yes, I would, this I've set aside for persons which do address the planning commission. On. Uh, matters not on the agenda. Speakers will have. Our speakers will be limited to five minutes, if you have any red material, please provide at least ten copies.
I, I just. Go into depth, okay? The reason why I never accepted my offers, okay, is to have a property developed is because. You paid Edwin Francis Glenn fifty-five thousand dollars an acre, you guys offered me seventeen thousand dollars an acre. And couldn't agree to how wide the road was, all right? So when we say that this is for the development, I wanna work with the city to develop the property, all right? It's so frustrating, time and time ago again, and it's been more money on the legal costs. When I am very confident that I'm gonna win again, all right, why can't we sit down and work together? I don't understand why we can't. The city committed themselves to this loop road, I didn't commit the city to this loop road, the city committed themselves. Please, did anybody read that packet? If, if you didn't, haven't even got the email of it, did you even read the packet? Do you see how frustrated I am? To see, to say that you don't even get the email to read the packet and the whole packet states, it's wrong, it's wrong, it's wrong, it's wrong. And then. To be told you didn't even open it, it, it makes me think that you guys didn't even read what was said. And that's so sad, we're supposed to go through the process, that meeting, uh, on the earlier one today was so awesome because there was a conversation. Well, it wasn't any conversation, it was throwing down your throat, oh, we should be happy, I'm happy with the loop road. But the numbers don't add up, there's a corruption that's going on in this town and it's being shown. And I think it's really sad, I can look you all in the eyes and say I've done nothing wrong, but ask. That we work together, even though we may not like each other, and I think that's really sad. Carla, I welcome to work with you, Mr. Hammond, I welcome to work with you, but this is bad, when we can't work together. And I'm showing you analysis and technical specifications. And no one wants to do anything except pass the buck and just throw it on down the door and have someone else do it. And I think that's so sad, our town, I moved back for this opportunity to live in Portman. And I think that's so sad. And everybody just wants to just say, oh, well, that's just the way it is. That's really sad, that's really sad. And, and I, I'm just disgusted every time I come in here and I'm sorry if I come off the wrong ways to you guys, but you know what? When you spend the money that I have, that could go into development cost, all right, that's the part that's really sad. I already, I wanna develop my property right now, but I want it to be done the first time. And if we develop it, it would have been already developed, right, correctly, for the way that I wanted to develop to making money. But I can't because the city, even though they committed themselves to it, doesn't wanna do it the right way like they said they were. And I'm paying taxes on sewer and I'm not getting sewers, when do I get my sewer for my, my property? I haven't gotten it, I'm paying taxes and you guys don't want to work with me. And you give me an offer that's pathetic, seventeen thousand dollars an acre. Sell me your land for seventeen thousand dollars an acre, that's a joke, you guys all know that's a joke. I think this is that. Thank you for listening, I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Jonathan. Mr. Schramm?
No, one of us all know previous.
Yeah, we, Angie and the.
Yeah, Angie and Eric were part of the Twitter modification, yes. I just wanna know if you're going to send out in. The hand stuff that people put in today, are you gonna send it out so we can put up with this packet and keep track of it or what? You know, the first developers gave you a new map and so I would, on, on. The minutes and agenda I have for this meeting that won't be on there and. Something else just, you, you just got, so I'm just asking, are you gonna send it out in the venue? Or how, how will people that go online to read this know? So. One of these, um, that. I think was done. Intermittently in the past. Was posting the final notices of decision. I know the city is working to update and change the website. I think in the future, we're gonna figure out how to, how to post the notices of decision. Because that would include the additional items that came in tonight. Um, currently, there's really not a mechanism to do that, uh, what we didn't do and maybe could have done. Is two things that we emailed the planning commission yesterday, we probably could have uploaded those two items to. The website for tonight's hearing and we can still do that. But yeah, again, historically, I know the notice, you know, the, the post-planning commission, you know. So tonight, uh, after tonight, uh, we have to make some changes to the document and we'll have. Vice Chair Irons come in and sign the findings for the second action, the first action was continued, so there will be a decision document on that real well. But on the second one, there'll be a decision document that we'll have him sign tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, something. And then. That would only sort of be the challenge, but actually, if we're valid. So. We'll have some info, the steps about what all will be added to that city council packet, but. That one will move forward, but we need to talk about how we're gonna put our notices of, how we're gonna hand our notices of decision more to public. They. Well, just so you know, I've been working very hard that whenever we get updated information. We do update the packet even after the meeting, if we get like size handouts. Those will be updated. Into the packet on the website, but how's anybody gonna know that? I mean, I'm gonna leave here tonight if I'm not asked this question and thinking that I'm done. Yeah, you're not gonna go back and know that that new stuff was added, yeah. Yeah. Well, it is, it is there, just so you know, uh, we've been doing that to try to keep that updated. Um, so the public can see what was handed out, okay, I appreciate that, that's what I want to know.
Well, I have another comment before we close, probably, I want, just so that it's on the record. There has never been a packet that I have not read, I usually come in and get it the day before or two days before, whenever we have. So I've looked at every packet, not to be, um, and you can pretty much ask anybody because, and they know I read it through. Because I come in with things flashballed through it, this is. Typo, this is not referenced to this, and so I read those packets if it's just somebody, a person. Um, had mentioned that, um, things weren't being read, just because I don't get any email doesn't mean I don't have it, I haven't read it. But anyway, moving on. Thank you for that.
Clarifying.
Oh, you bet.
That brings us to adjournment.
Ninety-four.
Nine fifty-four.
So thank you.